Well, good morning. I'm Rod Schegus, Parkland County Mayor, and I'll call the meeting to order at nine AM for June 22, 2021. So the session is now in order, and we are conducting this meeting virtually due to the ongoing issues with the COVID-19 pandemic. And this meeting is being conducted using electronic communication under Parkland County's Meeting Procedure Bylaw 2015-06 and Section 199 of the Municipal Government Act. So I'll call the meeting to order, and I'll start with today's roll call. So I'll call on each member of council by division and name and ask that you confirm your attendance by saying present. Division One Councillor Jensen.
Present.
Division Three Councillor Kabasik.
Present.
Division Four Councillor Hollins.
Present.
Division Five Councillor McNabb.
Present.
And Division Six Councillor Melnick.
Present.
So all members of council are present, and I would ask that everybody keep your telephone or microphone muted unless you're called upon to speak. So I'll just go through the procedures that we'll follow to ensure that there is transparency and fairness in today's meeting. So I will read out each agenda item and ask the Chief Administrative Officer to introduce the matter. I'll then get a member of council to put the motion on the floor. And subsequent to that, it'll be opened for discussion and debate. That will continue until all members of council have no further comments to make. Once that is done, I will ask members if they are in favor or against the motion, and once that vote has been called, I will declare the motion either carried or failed. So at this time, I'd ask Councillor Kabasik to provide this morning's inspirational reflection.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During our council meeting today, may my thoughts, words, and deeds be worthy of the trust our eight peers have placed in us to better serve the county and its people.
Thank you, Councillor Kabasik. So with that, on to today's agenda, we have the following items. Item 4.1, which is the adoption of the June 8, 2021 council meeting minutes to 9:15. Under Agenda Item 5.1, we have public input. 5.2 is a scheduled public hearing at 9:30 AM, and that is for Bylaw 2021-17, Legend Estates Overlay Amendment to Land Use Bylaw 2017-18. At 10 o'clock, under Item 5.3, we have a scheduled appointment with Tanta Solutions, and that pertains to the Tri-Municipal Regional Plan Report. Under Item 5.4, at 11 AM, we have an appointment, and that was the Town of Devon Recreation Facility Update. Item B1 is a request to schedule a regular council meeting for July 6, 2021. Item B2 is the Edmonton Global Air Service Opportunity Fund, and it's a funding request. Item C1 is Bylaw 2021-18, repeal of Wabman bylaws. Agenda Item C2 is Bylaw 2021-20, and that is the 2022 Fees and Charges. Item C3 is Bylaw 2021-19, and that's repeal of Bylaw 2020-14, which is Temporary Mandatory Face Coverings. Item D1, Town of Devon. So this is a major capital cost share request. Item E1 is the 2021 Tax Recovery Public Auction Reserve Bits and Conditions of Sale. E2 is the 2022 Budget Philosophy and the Drafted Five-Year Financial Plan and Tax Rate Analysis. Under Item 8.1 is the Rural Municipalities Alberta Contact Newsletter. Item 8.2 is Federation of Canadian Municipalities Update. Item 8.3 is Committee Reports. I'll ask any members, all members of council, if there are any additions or deletions to today's agenda. And I am not seeing any. Ms. Swain, are there any additions or deletions from administration this morning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No additions or deletions from administration.
Thank you. Can I get a member of council to put forward the motion to drop the agenda as presented, please?
Mr. Mayor, Councillor John McNabb, Division Five, I bring forward the motion to adopt the agenda as you read out. Thank you.
Thank you, and ask members of council to raise your hand if you're in favor of that motion, please. And that is carried. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to the consent agenda, and on the consent agenda today, our items 4.1, which is the adoption of the June 8, 2021 council meeting minutes. Item 8.1, which is the Rural Municipalities Alberta Contact Newsletter, and Item 8.2, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Update. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent agenda from members of council? And I'm not seeing any. Can I get a mover for the consent agenda, please?
Mayor Tracy Melnick, councillor for Division Six, I'll put forward the motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, and I'll ask members of council, please raise your hand if you're in favor of that motion. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. With that, we'll move to Item B1 under Chief Administrative Officer, Ms. Swain, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the October 26, 2021 organizational meeting, council meetings were scheduled to occur on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. Administration requests that an additional council meeting be scheduled on July 6, 2021 at 1:30 PM to allow council to be presented with matters that require attention prior to the July 13, 2021 council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. Can I get a member of council to put forward that motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, it's Councillor Jensen, Division One. I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councillor Jensen. Any comments or questions from members of council? Not seen any? Please raise your hand if you're in favor. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. We'll move to Item C1 under Legislative Matters. Ms. Swain.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we have Avery Dawes, who will be presenting the repeal of the Wabman bylaws. And we also have Mr. Josh Cullen on the line for support, so I will pass it over to Mr. Dawes for his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. Hello, Mayor and Mr. Mayor and members of council. As a result of Order in Council Number 3862020, the village of Wabman dissolved into Parkland County, becoming a hamlet of the county as of January 1, 2021. The 118 bylaws of the former village continued to apply until they were appealed, amended, or replaced by Parkland County's council. To this date, following from previous council action, over 100 or around 100 of the Wabman bylaws still remain in effect. Over the coming weeks and months, bylaws will be continuing to be brought forward. We have one more set after this second last one. They are organized into themes as they have been before. Today, Bylaw 202118 represents the repeal of 26 of the former village's bylaws, organized into three themes. We have Public Works Matters, Water and Wastewater Matters, and Expired and Outdated Matters. Each of these themes has an accompanying schedule attached to the provided brief and rationale for administration's recommendation, as well as a copy of the bylaws in question. Following from a thorough review by the project team and respective departments, administration recommends the repeal of these 26 bylaws through the passing of Bylaw 202118. Administration is ready to respond to any questions related to this bylaw. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dawes, for that presentation, and can I get a member of council to put forward the first motion for consideration, please?
Mr. Chair, Councillor Kabasik, Division Three, I move that Bylaw 202118 receive first reading.
Thank you, and open it up for comments or questions for administration. I am not seeing any. Please raise your hand if you're in favor of this motion. And that is carried. Can I get a mover for the second motion, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Darrell Hollins, Division Four, I move that Bylaw 2021-18 receive second reading.
Thank you. Comments or questions at second reading? Not seeing any. Once again, please raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. That is carried. Can I get a mover for the third motion before us?
Mr. Mayor, Councillor John McNabb, Division Five, bring forward the motion and the Bylaw 202118-18 be presented at this meeting for third reading.
Thank you, those in favor. Please raise your hand. That is carried. Can I get a mover for the fourth motion, please?
Yes, Tracy Melnick, councillor for Division Six, I'll put forward the motion, the Bylaw 2021-18 receive third and final reading.
Thank you. I'm looking to members of council if there's any comments or questions for third and final reading of this motion. I'm not seeing any. I just want to thank again administration for continuing to bring these forward as we take the necessary steps to transition the former village into a hamlet and make the necessary changes so we have alignment with all of our land use bylaws. So that's much appreciated. Please raise your hand if you're in favor of this motion. And that is carried. Thank you. And can I get a mover for the fifth motion here?
Mr. Mayor, councillor Elisa Jensen, Division One, I'll make the motion that council approve authorization of electronic signature for Bylaw 2021-18 in accordance with Section 13 Municipal Government Act.
Thank you. Please raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. And that is carried. Thank you. We have a few minutes before public input, so we'll start with Item C.3, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Swain, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bylaw 2021-19 is being presented to repeal Bylaw 2020-14 Temporary Mandatory Face Coverings. In 2020, the Bylaw for Temporary Mandatory Face Coverage was implemented as a way to reduce the risk of COVID-19. Under the provisions of the Province of Alberta's COVID Relaunch Program, Bylaw 2020-14 is no longer required for the jurisdiction of Parkland County. This is aligned with the direction of many other municipalities in the region and with the direction by the province. I will pass it back over to council for any questions and for the proposed motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. Can I get a mover for the first motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councillor Kabasik, Division Three, I moved up Bylaw 202119, received first reading.
Thank you, and open up for comments or questions for administration. Councillor Melnick.
Sorry about that. Thank you. It's really not a comment or question. It's really just for administration. It's, you know, I think that it tends to be a very, can be a very decisive, divisive motion in some senses. Some people may feel that this should stay on. I do believe, though, that the best advice has always been to follow what Alberta Health Services is recommending, and so to me, it makes sense to remove this Bylaw, this face covering Bylaw at this time. Thanks.
Any additional comments from members of council? Councillor Kabasik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, this temporary mandatory face mask bylaw is related to council, facilities, staff, county, you know, members around the buildings, and I think people are going to make choices if they still wish to feel safe wearing a mask. That's personal choice, so it's just that the municipality is not binding, so there's people have choice and options.
Thank you for those comments, Councillor Kabasik. Any additional comments? Not seen any. I will ask members of council to please raise your hand if you're in support of this motion. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. With that, we will move to Item 5.1, Public Input. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to address council to bring forward any comments or concerns they would have with any matters. And today, we have two residents who have registered in advance to provide comment to members of council. And I'll ask administration to please allow Mr. Dustin Primo the opportunity to speak, and Mr. Primo, the floor is yours if you want to unmute your mic.
Thank you very much, sir. Can you hear me? My internet is really bad over here. That's why I'm on the telephone.
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. As you said, I'm Dustin Primo. I moved to Wabman back in 2011. Nice community. I seen a demand for a food and treat, food truck down at the waterfront. I proceeded to talk to the village of Wabman about possibly opening a food truck. The town was fully supportive and let me open a food truck there with a yearly permit fee. After the first few months I was there, I realized that my generators were too loud and disrupting the people enjoying the park. So I asked the village if I pay out of my own pocket, can I get power there? And they agreed and said yes, so I called Epcor and got Beach Electrical to come out and supply me with a power cord, which I paid for out of my pocket. It was a few thousand dollars. A year later, the marina there had to get their sailboats in and out, so they took out all the overhead power lines and went to underground. I was hooked up to one of those overhead lines. At that point, the town decided to get me a plug across the road in a new vendor's area only. I have been plugged into that power plug for seven years now and have been paying $105 a month for that plug, and I have proof of all of this. I designed my food trailer knowing that I would be allowed to be there and would not have to move it daily. It's extremely hard to move it daily as the deep fryers are hot and the grills take hours to cool down. So I designed it not to have to move it every day. My food truck has been in Wabman fully active since 2014. I have paid a yearly fee and a monthly power bill over this time. What I am asking council is that my food truck be allowed to remain in its position, remain plugged into the power outlet, as I discussed with Donna Watwaktoj, sorry, I hard pronounce this. Back in May, she and I had come to an agreement that I would give the village of Parkland County, sorry, $500 a year for the power and gave me the okay to go set up there. I have all that over email and phone conversations. I have had others question my power supply and why do I get to plug in, and they don't. I simply explained because I paid for this power out of my own pocket, and I pay a monthly fee. I planned to stay here long term. That is why I designed this truck. And it's covered in dragonflies as Wabman is the dragonfly capital. I thought this would be appropriate to do that to my food truck. I would like to keep serving this community as I have been here for eight years, close to a decade. I have regular customers that come to my business for their needs. This business puts food on my family's plates. Please do not take this away from us. Not to mention, I have 2 million liability through Wabunisa, at which Parkland County is under if any accident were to happen. Wabman Town requested that when I was working for them, for the village. I thank you for this time to speak, and please need some input. I need to stay there, council, please.
Mr. Primo, thank you for joining us and providing this information, and be assured administration will be having discussions and council will be apprised of any developments, and some member of our staff or administration will get back to you.
Okay, yeah, like I said, I've been here almost a decade, guys, and this is my livelihood here, and now I was told by a Rob that I have to pull my truck in and out every single day, which makes no sense. I'm there every day, and that would just add hours upon hours to my workload.
Well, again, thank you, and staff will be in touch with you. Appreciate your calling in this morning. Our second, you're very welcome. Our second registered speaker this morning is Ms. Caroline Campbell, and the floor is yours, Ms. Campbell.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me talk. I really just wanted to join quickly to just reinforce, I think council has already decisions for Bylaw 202119 to repeal the temporary face coverings. And I can see it's already been voted on. I believe that was second reading today. So I just wanted to encourage that and show my support for that. Perhaps I might just add a little bit to that after Councillor Melnick had spoken, just to agree with what she has said in regards to the legislation of the province in regards to health matters, and perhaps if I might be able to suggest that future considerations of this nature where it's health of Parkland residents might be left to the Health Ministry of the Province rather than council or councillors making those kinds of decisions for individual health decisions of the residents of Parkland, understanding that Parkland is also an employer and might need to make decisions differently for employees hired, but for general public that they leave those decisions perhaps to the province in the future. Thank you so much for letting me talk.
Thank you for joining us this morning, Ms. Campbell, and for providing your comments and opinions on this matter. Very much appreciate it. We do value our residents' input to council, so it's very much appreciated. Thank you, and have a great day. With that, we'll move back to Item C3, the face covering. item C three, the face covering, mandatory face covering bylaw and the repeal of it. And so we do have first motion that has passed. I'm looking for a mover for the second motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Daryl Hollins, Division Four, I move that bylaw twenty twenty one dash nineteen receive second reading.
Thank you. Comments on second reading? Not seeing any. As members of council, please raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. Can I get a mover for the third motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, it's Counselor John McNabb, Division Five, that bylaw twenty twenty one dash nineteen be presented at this meeting for third reading.
Thank you. Please raise your hand if you're in favor of this motion. That is carried. Can I get a mover for the fourth motion on this item, please?
Yes, Tracy Melnick, Counselor for Division Six. I'll put forward the motion that bylaw twenty twenty one dash nineteen receive third and final reading.
And final opportunity for members of council to comment on this bylaw. I I just want to thank our administration and all the staff who took the efforts to ensure that there was compliance. I know it's challenging for a lot of our peace officers, but I also want to acknowledge how diligent our staff were in protecting members of the public when our offices were open at the outset and also protecting staff while they're at our different facilities or on the work site by providing the necessary PPE and and hand sanitizers. And also just that educational component, which I think is critical for all items like this. Sometimes it's education is far more effective than enforcement. As with that, ask members of council if you're in favor of the motion. Please raise your hand. And that is carried. Thank you. And can I get a member of council to put forward the fifth motion, please?
Mr. Melnick, the motion, Annisa Jensen, Counselor Division One, that council approve electronic signature for bylaw twenty twenty one dash nineteen in accordance with section two thirteen of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you, Counselor Jensen. Ask members of council, please raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Wayne, we'll move to item E one under Chief Administrative Officer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle Kirschmeyer will present the twenty twenty one tax recovery public auction reserve bids and conditions of sale. And answer any questions that council may have. Thank you. And I believe Ms. Kirschmeyer had called in. We may just have to give her a moment to get off of the audio. And Michelle, you may have to press, maybe Barbara Lewis can confirm, but I think there's a number that has to be pressed to get off mute.
Yes, it is star six on your phone.
There we go. Thank you, Ms. Wayne. Mayor and members of council, as required by the MGA, a municipality must annually prepare a tax arrears list showing the parcels of land on which there are tax arrears for more than one year as of March thirty first. Further to this, any parcel of land shown on the twenty twenty tax arrears list, which remains in arrears as of March thirty first, twenty twenty one, must be offered for sale by public auction between April first, twenty twenty one, and March thirty first, twenty twenty two. Administration has scheduled the twenty twenty one public auction date for Wednesday, September fifteenth at ten AM in council chambers at Parkland County Center, which will be advertised as per the MGA. The motions before you today are that council approve the terms and conditions of sale for the twenty twenty one public auction as presented in attachment one, and that council approve the reserve bids for the properties being offered for sale at the public auction on Wednesday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty one, at ten AM, as presented in attachment two.
Thank you, Ms. Kirschmeyer, for that report. And I'm looking for a member of council to put forward the first motion on this item.
Mr. Chair, Counselor Kabasiak, Division Three, I move that council approve the terms and conditions of sale for the twenty twenty one public auction as presented.
Thank you, and I'll open it up to comments and questions from members of council. Counselor Melnick.
Thank you. So I noticed when looking at the property, the appraised values and such, that many of them are just given not as a specific location, especially like those in hamlets or or anything. Is there really a reason why we just give a identifier as the quarter section? You know, because I thought in the past we we had actual right identifiers. So just looking to make sure that we are within the, which I'm sure we are, but making sure that they're identified as the in the right manner. Thanks.
Yes, you're correct. We used to identify role numbers on there and we actually removed them for privacy issues. So according from our legislative services, this is the information they felt that we could portray without violating anybody's confidentiality on their actual parcels.
Any additional comments or questions from members of council? I have one question, and this is to perhaps administration and Ms. Wayne. What is our philosophy when considering where and when we exercise our ability to foreclose on properties that are in tax arrears? And I ask this because looking at the list, there's three properties that are valued over a million dollars. And they range from roughly one point seven million to two point eight million. And you know, anybody who's followed real estate market for the last three to five years knows that those properties take a long time to move. And I'd suspect that maybe all three of these do have mortgages. So I'm wondering why we wouldn't verify if there's a financial institution or another party that has an interest in these and have them take action and therefore pay the property tax and the school requisition. Because we all know we're responsible for remittance of that school requisition. And if we don't move these properties during auction, we're stuck with that bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I pass it over to Ms. Kirschmeyer or Mr. Dyke, maybe I'll just state that in all these situations throughout the whole process of dealing with homes or properties such as this, we do make every effort to work with the homeowner and try to come to a resolution before we get to this point. But Ms. Kirschmeyer or Mr. Dyke may have some comments on your last questions there.
Yes, I can speak to that. Based on history from our previous auctions, last year we started with thirty five properties and only one actually went to auction. The year before that was forty three properties, only two went to auction. And in twenty eighteen, we actually canceled the auction. So we do work with the residents. We do try to come up with tax agreements. A lot of times the banks will step in and pay or people will pay once it's been advertised. So we do have a really good collection history. Our goal is not to take the property, so we do try and work with residents to come up with a tax agreement. And if that fails, then we do put them up for auction. And once that happens, then it goes over to legislative services to take over from there.
Thank you. I still think there's, I believe there should be at least a discussion to give consideration whether we do take action on some of these higher end homes and other properties that may be difficult to dispose of. Thank you. Any further questions from members of council? I am not seeing any, so we do have the motion on the floor. Please raise your hand if you're in favor. And that is carried. Can I get a mover for the second motion, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Daryl Hollins, Counselor Division Four, I move that council approve the reserve bids for properties being offered for sale at the public auction on Wednesday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty one, at ten AM as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Hollins. Questions or comments? Not seen any. Please raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. With that, under item five point two, we do have a scheduled public hearing. And that is for bylaw two zero two one dash one seven, and that's text amendments to the Legend Estates Overlay Regulation, Section ten point five of the Land Use Bylaw two zero one seven dash one eight. And I'll call the hearing to order. Formal records are being kept of these proceedings. And this hearing is being held in accordance with the provisions of section six nine two of the Municipal Government Act as amended. And this is to provide Parkland County Council an opportunity to hear from the public and their comments on the proposed bylaw two zero two two one dash one seven. So we'll begin this hearing with an overview from administration. Administration will give a quick overview and also advise members of council of any correspondence that was received prior to the public hearing. There will be an opportunity for members of council to ask questions for administration. Then there'll be an opportunity for members of the public to address council during this hearing. And would ask that all the comments are related to this bylaw. I will also ask that individuals of the public who are speaking identify themselves. And please try to limit your comments to approximately ten ten minutes. If you require additional time, I'll ask members of council if they're comfortable and wish to provide that opportunity. Following presentations, we will again have an opportunity to ask questions of administration. Once questions have been asked and council is satisfied, they have enough information to make a decision on this matter. The hearing can be closed. If additional information is required, we can have a motion to recess the hearing at that point. And I do want to advise this is the only time for members of the public to comment on this. And with that, I'll turn it over to administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jody Hancock, Director of Engineering Services, has joined us to provide an overview of the nine thirty AM public hearing for the Legend Estates Overlay Amendment twenty twenty one dash seventeen. I was prepared to answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Ms. Wayne, I believe it's actually me, not Jody.
Oh, apologies. Sorry. I must have had that wrong in my notes. So I'm Ms. Karen Oxley from our planning department. I'll pass it over to you to provide overview. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wayne. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Planning Services is before you this morning to present a public hearing for proposed bylaw twenty twenty one dash one seven, which are proposed text amendments to the Legend Estates Overlay Regulations within section ten point five of the Land Use Bylaw. There is no slide package for this presentation. All relevant documents have been included in your agenda package. So a little bit of background for you folks, proposed bylaw twenty twenty one dash one seven will amend Land Use Bylaw twenty seventeen dash one eight to recognize the stormwater and drainage improvements that were undertaken by the county in accordance with the AECOM Legend Estates Stormwater Drainage Improvements Report dated February twenty twenty. Last year, on May twenty sixth, twenty twenty, bylaw twenty twenty dash zero four was approved by council. This bylaw implemented the current Legend Estates Overlay District. Subsequent to the passage of bylaw twenty twenty dash zero four, administration began working with landowners to address the stormwater management and grading issues. Administration worked to obtain the required land and utility rights of way necessary to undertake the work outlined in the AECOM report. By the end of September twenty twenty, the stormwater management work had been completed and the restrictive covenants that were previously registered against these laws that addressed the stormwater management issues were discharged in December of last year. Following first reading on May twenty fifth this year, the bylaw was referred and advertised as per our legislative requirements. No comments opposing the proposed amendments were received. However, administration did receive three phone calls, which outlined the following. One sought just thought general information on the proposed amendments. A statement from one of the ownership partners who expressed appreciation that the county was dealing with this without significant involvement from the landowners. And adjacent landowners located in the Highway forty four corridor are concerned about the drainage issues that are ongoing within the larger drainage basin. In closing, administration recommends council support for bylaw twenty twenty one dash one seven based on the following rationale. The proposed amendments are in alignment with the policies of the Big Lake Area Structure Plan. The proposed amendments are in alignment with the goals and objectives of the Edmonton Metropolitan Regional Growth Plan. The proposed amendments are considered minor in nature and reflect the capital works completed to address the stormwater management within the Legend Estates subdivision, completed in alignment with the AECOM Legend Estates Stormwater Drainage Improvements Report. And the proposed amendments have been prepared by Planning and Development Services with input from both engineering services as well supported by external legal counsel. That concludes my presentation. Administration would be pleased to answer any questions. It is understood that there are, there were two speakers that registered. I see one is on the line. I don't know if the other one is here or not that would like to address this bylaw item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oxley. We'll look to members of council to see if there's any questions for administration at this point. And I am not seeing any. And so there were two registered speakers for the public hearing. And I see Mr. Grant Dorash is on on the line. And so I will turn that over to Mr. Dorash. So, Mr. Dorash, this is an opportunity for you to provide comment on this proposed bylaw amendment specific to the overlay in Legend Estates. The floor is yours.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can. Go ahead.
Glad for that. I had a WebEx, Mr. Sages, where unfortunately, even within the surrogate court in the province center there, the Alberta Court, where it wasn't working. So if at any time I cut out, I'd appreciate you advise me immediately. Because otherwise, I'll be talking to myself. I do greatly appreciate this opportunity to address council as well as you, your worship, in regard to what has been an ongoing issue for us personally since we bought that. I call it the curse of land in nineteen seventy eight. We had no idea at the time the obstacles, the realities with regard to that property, other than what we bought was swampland. And in tradition, my father, who had homesteaded in Boyle and had bought similar, he went on a plan to redevelop it and its current holding remains as a hobby farm. And we do that knowing that in regard to that property, it will continue to be whoever decides to take over ownership after we decide to sell, have a problem with water table issues. Now, these issues.
Mr. Dorash, if I may, is this property right in Legends Estates subdivision?
Not, but we we are immediately kitty corner to the northeast.
Okay, so this, as was identified by Ms. Oxley at the outset of her presentation, this is has to do with the overlay specific to Legend Estates and some of the improvements that were made within that subdivision. And council will be considering motions when when the hearing is closed to enable orderly and safe development in Legend Estates. This is not pertain to items outside of that. So it's, if you have any specific comments that are germane to this public hearing, we'd certainly welcome that. If they are with lands outside and not affected by this specific item, I would encourage you to register. register for public input during our next council meeting or a future council meeting.
I respect your, your commentary.
Um, Mr., just to the chair, I just asked that we pause the hearing just for a moment to allow Counselor Kabasyev to rejoin. Her internet connection just dropped, and she's just trying to rejoin now. Oh, and Mr. Chair, you're on mute.
Sorry. If you can, please advise me when Counselor Kabasyev is back online. Thank you.
Mr. Sajic, my understanding this hearing is being recorded?
Yes, it is.
And I know that Counselor Kabasyev will be voting on what she hears. Oh, you just cut out there for a bit. Is it safe for me to proceed, or would you like me to just sit here with you?
No, we, we will wait until Counselor Kabasyev has rejoined us. Thank you for your patience.
I do have other things that I must attend to, and I allotted half an hour for this.
I am back, Mr. Chair.
Oh, thank you, Counselor Kabasyev. So we will continue on with the public hearing. So again, Mr. Dorash, with all due respect, this, this hearing is held specifically to address the overlay for Legend Estates. So if there are comments specific to the matters contained within the attachments for the public hearing, please proceed. And if they are not, if there are comments or concerns that you have with your land, which is outside of Legend Estates subdivision, again, I would encourage you to call back during public input at a future council meeting.
May I address that, Your Honor? Or, I'm sorry, your worship?
Yes, go ahead.
I understand that you may view this specific to that, and I have within the context of my preamble, wanted to be made known that this bylaw that you have is one that really should go forward and apply generally to the area based on all the problems that we've had with water, with flooding, with drainage plans. The amount of money that has been spent has been incredible in that area. And as I look at the bylaw, and I look at subsection two of two, where it says Section ten point five point three B is replaced as follows. You've included in there, if I may read at the beginning here, regardless of the development or subdivision that is proposed, the development authority or subdivision authority, you have it as may require an applicant for development permit or subdivision approval to submit as part of any application for development or subdivision. On it goes. I don't know why you would not use the word will. Use any other English term that says it has to be part of any application for subdivision, development or approval. And I think if you did that, you would help out many developers themselves that may or may not be aware of what they have actually bought. And I think that being said, what is being asked further in that, under paragraph I, two, and three, site drainage grading plan, soil compaction quality report that either certifies the lands are suitable for the development or that provides recommendation. That paragraph, as well as any other information that the opinion of the development authority or subdivision authority is required to determine if the site is suitable for the proposed development or subdivision. Too often, what I found is that you look at specific ASPs, not incorporating the knowledge that is in our case, right across the road from Highway forty four, that is impacted by a much larger body of water underneath. We have one of the biggest aquifers in Alberta underneath all of our properties, and Alberta Environment is a very key player in all of this stuff. So I think what I'd also like to see included in this is certification and approval from Alberta Environment as well. Without attending to what their concerns are, I think this bylaw is remiss in providing what I call is just the bare minimums here. We need to have much greater oversight of any sort of developments that occur within those wetland areas out there. We also are aware that, I think it's the Wagner Natural Area, has a caveat or has registered to gain other titles in the property. They seem to also come to the table. So what I'd like to see within this bylaw, and per my preamble with what we've experienced, is we need to have much broader coverages so that the principles here would be amended, not just within this part for the Legend Estate Overlay bylaw amendment, but it be inclusive to govern development for those other properties that may be in close proximity, because you're not doing anyone a favor here, including the sellers. So those are the concerns that I wanted to address to you. I recognize that perhaps some of my comments you may have not taken as specifically developed to this proposal for development, but the one comment that I did make to Ms. Oxley prior to me getting involved with this is I hope that somehow you got the picture that I provided for you of our property, and Legend Estate is within that. You can see it. I don't know, Karen, was that ever submitted to council?
We did receive that picture, Mr. Dorash.
And those illegal ditches, that's groundwater, Mr. Sajis. That is not drainage water. That's groundwater. So that highlights how we all in that area, all of us as collective landowners are impacted by the same realities. With that, what I wanted to do, and I'm very thankful for the opportunity to address council, and trust me, Mr. Sajis, I will, if need be, also go and make application to have my other concerns made at a public forum in future. And one last question, are you guys closed during July and August? For council meetings?
For part of July and part of August, late July and early into August, yes.
So there will be an opportunity, perhaps, to address it in a more current situation at the next one in July. Is that correct?
That, that is, and our-
Look forward to addressing that further to you. If council or you, sir, have any questions of me, otherwise I must get to my next appointment. I'm sorry to be rushed here.
No, thank you for calling in, Mr. Dorash. Appreciate it. With the presentation from Mr. Dorash, I'm wondering if there's any questions or comments members of council might have for administration. Counselor Melnick?
Thank you. I'm just, if Oxley or any member of the team would like to respond to Mr. Dorash's request in and around changing the wording, please advise us to your rationale around that. Thanks.
Through your mayor, um, in terms of changing may to shall or will, it does give the development authority a little bit, a little bit more flexibility in, in requiring it. It does, it does give us the opportunity to have a, have a second look at the property, and if it's not necessarily, may not be necessary. That also being said, if someone is doing a shed, for example, accessory building versus a principal dwelling as well. So that does give us a little bit more flexibility there. If we did use the word shall, that would imply that every single structure would have to abide by that, even if it is accessory. Secondary to that, that wording was actually drafted originally by Brownlee with the may versus the shall throughout this. So, and this has been vetted through our legal, external legal counsel as well. So I would be very hesitant to make any changes to that without Brownlee's input.
Thank you, Ms. Oxley. And I was going to make a comment. If we did substitute or put in shall or will for the smaller development, it puts significant onus and additional cost to the property owner as well. And Mr. Dorash also commented on having a requirement for certification from Alberta Environment. And, you know, in, in what I looked at online, this area isn't identified in the maps that it was developed by the province for flood hazard areas or floodways, which does require some oversight and approvals from Alberta Environment as well. So there is, and I don't think Alberta Environment would want to get involved, because it's just additional workload for them. I'll look again to members of council, any further questions to administration at this point? I am not seeing any. The second registered participant for the public hearing is Mr. Jack Portes, and I see he is on. So if you'd like to unmute your mic, the floor is yours.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Jack Portes. I live at number ten. So this is the first house to the left coming in on the east side, and I've been living here for five years, and I've never had any water problems here. So I don't know why we would change the wording from may to shall in the subdivision. The work that was done last year, all the drainage has been addressed in the sense that the dry pond next to us now is could hold stormwater should it require it, but I can tell you, I'm looking at it right now, and it's empty. So there, there doesn't seem to be any groundwater here. There's definitely no issues. So I'm glad to see that we're moving forward with the development progress in the area. And just wanted to let the council know that, living here for five years, through the spring thaws and so on, the water does, and was going to the older pond as well, but obviously there was some depth issues there. But with the new system, it's, seems to be gathering water when it does rain, and it's working good. And I just wanted to mention that with all the rain that we had last year, we have a nine foot deep basement here, and the sun pump was running last year with the rain, but it hasn't run since. So it's obviously not groundwater, rather rainwater that we gathers when it's raining. So thanks for all the work that was done, and looking forward to the development going ahead with, as planned, because there's, like I say, I've been here five years. There's never been any issues. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Portes, for your comments. Again, I'll just look to members of council to see if there's any comments or questions they might have for administration from any of the presentations, whether it's from Ms. Oxley or our two residents. And I am not seeing any. I do have one question for administration, and it's section three subsection C, and this talks about actions that the development authority or subdivision authority may ask as a condition of approval. And it states including but not limited to lot drainage, geotechnical investigations, and confirmation of fill or soil compaction prepared by a qualified engineer. So to me, the way this reads is it's either confirmation of fill, so has fill brought in, or soil compaction. I want, and I'm wondering if it should be and/or, because if there's just a small amount of fill that's brought in, I don't think it would affect any development. But if it's fairly significant, I would assume we would like to have some compaction tests that are done. And the second question I have, just in regards to the designation of the professional engineers, do we require that that engineer be in good standing? So those two questions, please. Thank you.
Through your mayor, the, the and/or, I will, my, my personal thought is we would, administration would be open to that minor amendment. I will let other members of administration comment on that, though. And as for the qualifications of professional engineer, that is actually identified within the engineering design guidelines standards. So it's a little bit redundant. So we tried to summarize that as much as we could, as far as, as far as the requirements for certifications.
Thank you, Ms. Oxley. Mr. McGowan?
Yes, I would just also reiterate that they would not be in standing, and they would not have that designation as a professional engineer if they weren't in good standing. So that that would certainly trigger that condition.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? I am not seeing any. I will ask members of council if they feel they have enough information to make a decision on this matter, or let me rephrase. If, if there's any members of council that would like additional information, if you can, please bring that to the attention of council here today. Thank you. And I'm not seeing any. So with that, I will close the hearing, and there are two motions, pardon me, three motions for consideration on this item. Can I get a mover for the first motion?
Mr. Mayor, it's Counselor John McNabb, Division Five, and bring forward the first motion, that bylaw twenty twenty one dash seventeen received second reading.
Thank you. And can I just ask everybody on this call to please ensure that your mic is muted unless you're speaking? With that, we'll open up for questions or comments for second reading. I'm not seeing any. All us members of council, please raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. And that is carried. Can I get a mover for the second motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll put forward the motion. It's Tracy Melnick, Counselor for Division Six, that bylaw twenty twenty one dash seventeen received third and final reading.
Thank you. And final opportunity for members of council to comment on the bylaw amendment.
And, Mr. Chair, I just got a message from our Legislative Services Group just to confirm that the hearing was closed.
Yes, I did close the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, sorry, comments on third and final reading from members of council? Not seeing any. Once again, please raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. And we have one final motion with this agenda item. I can get a mover for that, please.
Sure. It's Ann-Lisa Jensen, Counselor Division One. I'll make the motion that council approve authorization of electronic signature for twenty twenty one dash seventeen in accordance with Section two thirteen of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you. And please raise your hand if you're in favor of that motion. That is carried. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to item five point three on the agenda, and this is another scheduled appointment, and I will turn that over to Ms. Swain for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're right on time. So during this presentation, we will cover the following topics: a brief project history, including the purpose, goals, and anticipated outcome of the Tri-Municipal Regional Plan Project, as well as governance structure; discussion of the collaborative journey that we have undertaken together; how the report was developed; and how we intend to move forward- How the report was developed, and how we intend to move forward regarding the plan's implementation. There will also be time provided at the end of the presentation for questions from council. And I'd just like to take a moment to thank staff for their contribution to this project. We had subject matter experts, directors, and general managers who collectively spent thousands of hours on this project. We also had our mayor, Rod Chagis, councillor Tracy Melnick, on the project committee, and councillor John McNabb as the alternate. This work has given us a tremendous repository of information that we can use for years to come. I'd also like to recognize Lauren Abig for her work on the administrative committee. The administrative committee was the liaison between the CAOs, the organizations, and the consultants, providing valuable input and guidance into the documents and the process. We also had Larissa Linmark as project manager, supporting the day-to-day tasks and project organization. Larissa's work was covered by Fain and Long over the last couple of months, while Larissa is enjoying her new role as a mom. Lastly, I'd like to pass along my gratitude to Dave Magarva and the team at Tantus. Dave and his team were flexible and adaptable throughout the project, and it is much appreciated. So now I'd like to invite Dave Magarva, who will present the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Swain, and good morning, your worship, and through you to members of council. It is really hard for me to believe that I'm presenting the final report for this project. We started this, well, you started it before we did, but we were brought on board in January 2020. A few things happened right after that, you may be aware of. I say facetiously. And it has been quite the adventure. I have nothing but compliments for Parkland County, your staff, the engagement of your elected officials, Ms. Swain herself, Ms. Abig. The cast goes on and on. Parkland was in a unique position, even though this was a tripartite agreement and a tripartite project. Parkland had the enviable task of managing the project and managing the grounds, and I think they did spectacularly. With your permission, your worship, I'd like to share my screen and offer a presentation to summarize the final report.
Yes, please proceed, and I'm sure staff will give you control of the screen.
You should be seeing it now.
And we have it. Thank you.
Excellent. So as I said, this is the final presentation of this part of the journey. And you're going to hear the word journey used quite frequently. Number one, I have a limited vocabulary. But number two, it is the best way to describe how this project proceeded and how it fits in the historical context of your three municipal partners. What I'd like to cover, and Ms. Swain alluded to it, but I'd like to cover a bit of the project background, a bit of how the project was governed, and then this notion of continuing the collaboration journey, how we got to an actual plan. And then I'd like to spend a little bit of time talking about the detail of how the report structured and how the plans is prepared, and an element around moving forward. As Ms. Swain suggested, I will make myself available for questions from councillors at the conclusion. So the background, I think council is well aware of this for the public watching. This has been a long time coming together. The municipalities worked together in 2018 to develop what this plan could be, to take a regional lens of how you could continue to work together. And I consciously use the word continue. You have a long history of partnership. And a joint letter of intent was signed in January 19. The project was funded through a grant from Western Economic Diversification, and the work, it says, continued into 2021. The report you have is hot off the presses. There was actually a couple of changes that had to be made on Friday last week. So this is the scope of the project. We didn't waste any time between the conclusion of the project and getting it in front of your council. The purpose, looking at even before the COVID-19 pandemic, even before I think we truly understood the impacts of the downturn in the oil economy, Parkland economy, Parkland County, obviously, is looking to the future, especially with the movement away from some of the coal-fired generation in your region. And the luck among the three partners was this broad look to the future of how can you not only remain excellent as individual organizations, but how can you leverage your partnerships with the other municipalities to provide a more vibrant, growing, inclusive tri-municipal region? And, you know, specifically, this was looking to improve governance. It was the full gambit around service delivery, financial capacity, economic prosperity. There was a very broad, broad lens on this project, as you'll see when we start going through the actual deliverables, excuse me, that have come out of it. The key term on this slide that I want council to be aware of, and you, public as well, is that throughout the project, the project team members, the governance group that was in place, really put a lens of value on how we were defining these relationships. And then value to the municipal entities, yes, but more so value to your residents and the residents of the town of Stony Plain and the city of Spruce Grove. In that context, we talked about value being not just new and better and more, and there's an element of that in here. But the idea being, how do you get the best bang for your buck to do that and to improve the overall quality of life for citizens, which is, again, a very intangible thing to try to put a definition around? But we had some working pieces as well. As well, there was, you know, this examination of where programs and services align, how that could be advanced through greater cooperation, again, with the lens of the community at the forefront. The anticipation, we had hoped that the plan, and I believe we have, is to provide a path for the municipalities to align how they plan. And if nothing else, this document lays out some agreed-upon common goals, common projects, common understanding of how you can work together. And I think the how is as important as the what in this regard, in terms of charting a path. I'll make comment to some of the great successes you've had in the past and how that fits into this sort of context. We were also highly conscious, as we went into this, that this is a voluntary participative value-enhancing project and mindset. This has got nothing to do with restricting the autonomy of any of the three municipalities and putting in place a thou shalt directives. This allows you to be nimble. This allows you to take on things that are of value from your view, from the council seats for the residents of Parkland County. And it is long-ranging. Like, the anticipated outcome was that we would have short, medium, and long-term recommendations. You'll see the report is packaged in three of those steps like that, ending at the 20-year mark. That was mainly because most of the underlying reports that I'm going to speak to have a 20-year time horizon. But there are recommendations in the transportation utilities and infrastructure report and the land use plan that go out as far as 40 years. As Ms. Swain mentioned, we had a very deliberate governance structure in this project with such a broad scope and a bit nebulous in terms of what the final deliverables were. It was really important that we had governance voices there to provide course corrections, to provide ideas on where the next phase of work would take us. You had membership from all three councils on the project committee. I believe Ms. Swain referenced the mayor. And we had another councillor sit on the project committee with an alternate available when others weren't. The project committee also was supported with the CAOs. They sat on the project committee as well. And then Ms. Swain, and I just want to reemphasize her thanks to the administration committee. We had three senior representatives, one from each of your municipalities, as our day-to-day and quite literally many times a day guide to how this worked. I don't know that anyone, including myself, understood the number of decision points we were going to hit, where, you know, we would provide options, but it would be up to the municipalities to decide to return left or to return right at this inflection point. And admirable, admirable group. The volume of paper that was read and edited, the number of decisions that were made and guided, was exhausting for everyone. And it was, but very well done and very, very well structured to work together. The project manager, as Ms. Swain mentioned, that seat changed several times. Originally, Ms. Swain was on the administration committee, and as she moved into the interim CAO role, Ms. Abig moved in on to the, from the project manager position to the administration committee. Ms. Linmark took over for a while and then decided that she needed to go have a baby. So then we had Finian Long pick it up, and there really wasn't a missed beat. It was, it just goes to show how well your staff worked together and the communication among them. The integration consultant, that was the box that my team resided in. And we, as you can see through the dotted line relationship, we had interactions all through the governance structure and needed to. The secondary consultants, while they reported to the project manager, the secondary consultants were hired to develop the seven sub-strategies, for lack of a better term, to which this report is built upon. We helped guide them. We helped them collaborate amongst each other. But the project manager and the administration committee managed them as they worked through their work. As well, about halfway through the project, a communications and engagement consultant was brought on board. I'd love to tell you that I sat down and designed the look of the final report. I would have more responsibility to the words than I went to the really attractive layout of the document in front of you, and you're quite pleased with the work that was provided in that regard. When I mentioned the continuing the collaboration journey, at no point in this project did anyone that I interact think we were inventing collaboration among the three municipalities. In the picture on this graphic, probably the best-known outside of your three municipalities is the TriLeisure Center and its own partner and structure, its separate governance mechanism, and obviously, the funding commitments from the three municipalities. Recognize that there have been some, challenges might be a bit strong, but some different thoughts on terms of how it is run and organized and whatnot. I think it's incumbent on me to let you know that that is seen as a best practice when other municipalities are looking at how to work together. But it's also representative of what we found in terms of how you collaborate with each other. Typically, they take two paths. One, it's either staff, your staff members know each other across the municipal borders, and there's a phone call or a, hey, what do you think about this? And it'll evolve from staff up, where it has to go through various decision-making processes. Some are perfectly complete at the administrative level. Some come in front of council for approval, direction, and amendment. The others are more like the TriLeisure, which is sort of a big deal, and typically started at the council level and then worked their way down to get more detailed. But what we found is that in this history, each one of those is treated as unique. There is no set path on how and when you collaborate with the other municipalities. And I think other than the specific projects that are recommended in the document, the overarching recommendation and the overarching growth of the three municipalities from completing the project is a better understanding of how that can be done, so that it becomes a tool for staff, it becomes a tool for council when they see an opportunity that can be leveraged financially, that can be leveraged expertise-wise, that can be leveraged by existing infrastructure, that one of the first questions that's asked is, can we partner with our neighbors on this? And I think this has been helpful. So the theme and the philosophy of the project is kind of built on that, that you're already good neighbors, that you already work well together. Now, this is putting just a bit more guidance in terms of how these decisions are made and what type of information is required for those to make sense. So in terms of the project and how we got to this final report, I did the first iteration of this presentation last night to Stony Plain Council. And I took a look at the integrated report box at the bottom, and I thought, jeez, that looks small in comparison to the rest of the slide when you consider how much effort has been put in here. The funneling effect is meant to represent sort of a refinement and a filtering of information to get to something manageable at the bottom. But it is certainly the goal we've been striving for. The initial work around research and overall analysis, it was made up of three major components. The current state analysis and report summarized a vast amount of documentation. And when Ms. Swain alluded to the fact that you have this available to you now, this is documentation from your three municipalities individually and any collaborative work that you've done in terms of recreation plans and social development plans and land use plans, and all that historical piece, the GIS data, all these things. So it is placed into a SharePoint site, an online source, that we're now in the process of trying to figure out how we move that from our SharePoint site to make it available and owned by the municipalities. I just want to give you some understanding that there are thousands and thousands of pages of documents. I believe there's about 500 documents in the repository that's all been catalogued, one click away with links from a spreadsheet. And we're talking, those of you with strong computer literacy, this is about half a terabyte of information, which is an incredible amount of documents and information. And that was put in place. We didn't recognize that COVID was coming and the lockdown and the restrictions on engagement. But the thought was that there is a wealth of public opinion in those documents that residents have been asked about things numerous times. And the idea was, let's look at those first and see if there's sufficient understanding to build the plans upon first, before we go out to the community. And with the restrictions of COVID, it was probably a great course in hindsight that allowed us to continue really unfettered approach. As well, another consultant was hired to develop a centralized data source so that all of the planning documents would be working on the similar forecasting assumptions around economics, population growth, just demographic information, so that we, all the plans aligned from the same base understandings. And then as well, and it's kind of a hybrid document, this competitiveness review that was done, looked, it is a base document that others were basing, reports were built on. But it's also a bit of a standalone. It was an assessment of the competitive position of the tri-municipal region and how it fits economically into Alberta, into North America, and into the world. And it was incredibly valuable document, not just for the economic development strategy, but for a number of the other areas as well. From there, the secondary consultants were hired in those seven areas. They took a look at specific disciplines and functions within the municipalities and developed long-term plans and strategies based on those areas. This was the wealth of that staff input that Ms. Swain spoke to. Really felt like we had a meeting every two or three a day for some stretches there, trying to ensure that there was coordination and that we were, we bugged staff enough for the information that was required and no more, was the real philosophy on that piece. As well, then, my firm looked at the service strategy across all areas in the municipalities in terms of things that weren't in the other strategic documents, as well as areas where they could apply different collaborative models. What that resulted in was the report in front of you and a number of projects. I'm going to go into this investment packages a little bit in a little bit more detail. I'm going to just go to the next slide and then come back to this one. Coming out of those seven strategies and all the other documentation and the recommendations that were provided, there was 257 projects identified, which, when we took a look at that at first blush, and we kind of knew they were coming as the report started to roll out, that there was no way financially, staff-wise, focus, there's no way that you would be able to complete all 257 projects, nor probably should you. There were a number of areas that there was less than 100% agreement on. So we broke those projects into summaries and worked with the CAOs, and they did briefings with council on these to get sort of a sense of where priority lies. And this was a snapshot in time, that when they were available, they were reviewed. And what we found is that as we sorted them, we defined something called a strong yes. And a strong yes was a project where all three municipalities that were council saw interest or actually had existing policy directing the administration to move in that regard of a project. And that was 18 out of the 277. While that doesn't seem like a lot, that's actually showing how aligned your policy and council positions actually are, that there's that many areas that you could explore. We then, the next level of agreement was what we called a yes. And that's where there was, where all municipalities were at least neutral, but one or more saw this as a high council interest item, or they had policy directing staff to move in that direction. And there was a broad swath of these. 99 of those resulted. We also had a number of other ways to score them. It resulted in, in either a weak no, we called it, or there were bilateral pieces where say, Parkland County and the town of Stoney Plain had some interest, but there was nothing for Spruce Grove. Those have been documented and provided separately. And there were ninety-seven, the two or more, just that wasn't a collaborative piece, you know. Go ahead, the municipality that sponsored the project or liked the idea, fill your boots, but this probably wasn't a real opportunity for collaboration. Resulting from that were the hundred and seventeen projects that are in the plan before you. And that gave us a lot to work with, to put it mildly. And so then in terms of how do you organize a hundred and seventeen projects? When I mentioned that the report was hot off the presses, I recognize the language of this matrix in your report is actually a little different. But I'll explain to you that, that the logic on how we sorted the projects. If you look at the rows, this was about building on something you already have in place. This could be a current program, this could be use of a current facility. This could be changes to existing us, infrastructure. This is about current place. Priming our future, or as it's phrased in the report, is about new. It's about new opportunities, new ways to build capacity, new things, new programs and pieces like that. So you can think of those things as almost a existing or, or new type aspect. As well as we walked through them, we realized that there were projects that were related to the actual delivery that your municipal programs do. Now whether that's, I don't know that it's in here, but things like snow clearing or direct recreational programming or permitting or things where the municipality actually does the work and delivers the service. But there was also a wealth of those about what the municipality does to support others. While they're not directly delivering the program, you have things like not-for-profit organizations, you have things like the business community, you have pieces like that that the municipality has a critical role in, in ensuring, ensuring the health and vitality of those organizations or those individuals. But it's not necessarily a specific municipality delivered program. And so what that resulted in is, is that if we take the existing or new things municipally delivered or, or municipally supported, we ended up with four specific, what we called collaboration strategies coming out of it. And I'll just dig into those a little bit deeper as well. So energizing municipal programs, this is about taking what exists currently and is there a way to use collaboration to get more bang for your buck? Is there a way to, to alter or tweak the programs you currently have in place? Or the way you use facilities or the way you use infrastructure to provide more value to your citizenry through a collaborative model? And of the hundred and seventeen, there were thirty-eight that fell into that category, the largest grouping. Not surprising as most of the focus of our municipality is on municipal operations. And there were a number of ideas and suggestions on how that can be best pursued. If we move across the matrix from the box on the top left to the box on the top right, this is about existing, excuse me for more. Existing program services, infrastructure that you have in place to support the community or community organizations or business, that again, collaboration could give you an opportunity among the three partners to enhance what already exists, to, to build capacity in the organizations. So that the organizations have greater capacity, the business community has greater capacity, those type of elements of municipal involvement. And there, there were twenty projects were flagged in that piece. If we move down in the matrix into the more future oriented, the more new and, and up and coming, this again is about supporting the business community and, and not-for-profit groups and, and organizations. But it looks to it in from that future lens of what, what new could we build together that would enhance and provide value to our partnerships and our relationships? And then back over to the bottom left-hand one, this is about, again, back to the municipal delivery aspect, looking at municipally delivered services that could be done in a new way. Either through new infrastructure, through collaborative programming, collaborative administration, collaborative contracting, there's a number of different ways that this can be accomplished. And this was the second largest group, obviously with thirty-six projects available there. There was another meet need on how to organize. So we had grouped them under these strategies and these collaborative strategies. And I should mention, those aren't intended to be pick one. Those are just a way for, for folks to think about these projects and how they're related to one another and other areas where as things emerge, you know, this plan was done. I was going to say at a point in time, but actually in various points in times since last January. So there's, there's things that have moved to the forefront, there are things that will move to the forefront. And so in terms of a specific order of doing the projects, it didn't seem appropriate or actually all that relevant. Better to put the mechanisms in place to direct those decisions or those recommendations as you move forward. What we have done is we've looked at interdependency among the projects. And what you'll see as you look through there, there are some natural projects that probably should come first because of their foundational nature. This could be things like looking for similarities in terms of standards or how you do business. Not just to, to refine and make operations more efficient, but from the view of your stakeholders. There are some pieces in there around environmental or engineering standards and, and the view to look at how you do things, not to impact your autonomy and making decisions, but just more to help third parties coming in who may work in all three municipalities to help them navigate the processes. So there's a deeper understanding of how things get done. And there's a number of these pieces in the foundational layer that need to get built upon. And they get built upon in the developmental step. We've, we've selected arbitrarily in some essence a five-year component for those first two steps. We fully anticipate projects to move around as priorities change, as the environment around you changes. But in the report, they're provided as foundational, then developmental. And the ones that are farther field, either because there's a lot of groundwork that needs to be done or there's a lot of, they don't make sense to collaborate on right away, or some of them were put there just because of the financial reality that some of the bigger ticket items are moved out farther in the plan until proper fiscal planning can be done around them. Those are the aspirational pieces. And as well in that moving forward section of the report, you'll find some less detailed and specific project-based recommendations, but more about when I, as I alluded to earlier in the presentation, about the how, how you collaborate. And the chief one among those that's prob, it is a project as well that will be critical for success is we have recommend, we have recommended a CIO collaboration secretariat to help sort through all this work that has been done. I, I should reinforce the fact that, that those seven secondary strategies, as we call them, those were not just done to build this plan. Those are standalone documents that have a wealth of information and some, some really well-articulated movement forward that I would suggest would, would be great reference documents to your planning process for years to come. And so this idea of a CIO secretary to sort of manage how this collaboration can continue, how you can make it more predictive, how, who should be involved, a number of the reports recommended individual governance for things like housing and recreation and, and, and all those. We, we pulled the back a bit on some of those, just so that the CIO secretary can, can look at the, from a holistic view of what makes most sense, what's the best use, use of either council or administration time to guide these things with a regional lens. So that will be a critical component of, of actualizing this plan as you move forward. As you can tell, your worship, I'm a little bit excited about this. This has been the culmination of by far the largest, largest consulting project of my twenty-seven year career. It has been, certainly been one of the most fascinating. I have, apparently you can teach an old dog new tricks because I have picked up a few things over my last eighteen months. And quite frankly, it's been a joy to work with the, the staff provided by all three municipalities and certainly Parklands in general. So I stand ready for questions, your worship. Should anybody like to dig a little deeper?
Well, thank you, Mr. McGarver, for making the presentation today and the leadership that Tantus has provided to this project, acting as the integrated consulting and compiling all the information from the sub-reports of the focus areas that you had identified. So with that, I will, at this point, entertain a motion and then I'll open it up to comments or questions.
Mr. Chair, Council of the Base, Division Three, I move that the tri-municipal regional plan report be received for information as presented. If I could speak to the, speak to the motion, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank administrations, administrations plural, and Mr. Garva, council had an opportunity over a number of periods to discuss and be updated on what was happening with this particular project because it was fairly lengthy, as Mr. Garva indicated. Ms. Swain and her staff, senior administration did give us that information on an ongoing basis. And last Wednesday, I believe it was, we had a four-hour session with all of the councils and we went over the draft report, report. So it was fairly exhaustive. And when Mr. McGarver, when you talk and your staff talk about a lengthy process, just getting an indication from the questions and the discussions and the small group sessions that we had last week. It was, it was very, very thorough and certainly analyzed all areas of tri-regional cooperation and growth over the next period of time. So I just want to say I enjoyed the, the exercise and I certainly appreciate the amount of effort that's gone into this and extend my compliments.
Other comments or questions from members of council? Counselor Melnick?
Thank you. So Parkland County underneath the leadership of our former CIO Mike Heck and the interim CIO Laura Heck, along with council and staff, had worked very diligently to ensure that we receive a report for the tri-region that has the potential to enhance the region as a whole. Now, it's up to the three municipalities to work collectively together instead of individually to realize the efforts that actually went into this report. From my perspective, and while I understand that the scope of the work was not to develop a strategic plan per se for the region, I do believe that that is one area that the next council should be considering is to work on a development of a strategic plan for a portion of the county at least, so that all our efforts really are keeping that vision in mind and that individual municipalities don't kind of go off and create their own components that say benefit one area on its own. So I think one of the pieces that I think it's important to talk about is the integrated reports. So they fed into the mini, the main document, and I think that that is one of the potential risks that I see that could happen is that individuals, individual municipalities, individual council members take those pieces of the reports and try to feed it in as a project now that all collectively must participate in. Those were, those documents are just information pieces to feed in as Mr. McGarver had talked about, feeding into the main document. So I just want to, I hope that as a group, that those reports aren't taken out of the context of what the intent was. They are a component of the main report. And I think that, you know, our main intro, our, our main piece about why we did this work was to look for efficiencies. As we move forward, our municipalities need to continue to find efficiencies and also to find areas that we can work together to strengthen the region. So while there's been many times said the amount of hours and months that have gone into this report, there's still so much more work to be done now as a region in order to truly realize the, the benefit and, and move the municipality forward. So, so just again, wanted to say, I think this is a, it's a great document if it's used in the right, in the right way with the right, with the right focus and that focus being how do we make a better region for our municipalities collectively? With the understanding that the rural municipalities at times have some very different perspectives that need to be addressed. And what, so that's why I like also in the report that there's, sometimes there's some projects that, you know, maybe just two urban centers need to work on or an urban center and a one rural, it doesn't always have to be all three because we can still get a lot done. So thanks a lot.
Looking to other members of council for comments? Counselor Jensen?
Thanks. And sorry, my laptop is acting up. It's very loud right now. So thanks very much, Mr. McGarver, for the report and the opportunity to engage last week in what I thought was a very creative way to have us take in a lot of information in a quick time. And during that, those couple sessions, I, I noted as well, and I'd be remiss in saying I will be at future tables, but for future considerations, certainly that the potential of inclusion and engagement of neighboring indigenous communities is lacking in this report so far, but I, I trust it will be going forward. I see it just through the cultural strategy lens in terms of diversity and inclusion, but I really feel we're missing out on the significant opportunities that come with economic reconciliation and acknowledging the the powerhouses and the opportunity there that to average all of indigenous business and capacity will bring as well as economic development. So I look forward to seeing that, that occur and, and hope it does in the future, certainly. And I don't know if you have any comments on that. I did note some of the wording in the documents, things like that, that, that need to be refined. But there's great opportunity there and to engage our indigenous partners. Thanks.
May I respond through you, your worship?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, Counselor Jensen's observation is, is very pertinent to this. And, and I'd like to build on Counselor Melnick's comments of, of what this isn't, and I think those two are aligned. We were not asked, nor was there apt to at that point, there may be now, to provide a lockstep rigid. This is how the municipality will perform. And so what we provided, part of how the portfolio of projects is provided, is they're not intended to be exhaustive, they're not intended to be all that the tri-region can work on together. And there's a strong, strong recognition that those reports, as they were completed, were not all done on the same day. And even if they were, that is just a point-in-time snapshot. So you will see reflected in some of the projects, the importance of high-speed internet, which came to the forefront even more during the COVID crisis as everyone started to meet like this. That's just an example of how priorities can change, the environment around you can change. And so we felt it important that while the document provided direction to the three councils, it didn't restrict the ability to add, develop, alter, make right. And I don't mean to put any more pressure on Ms. Swain, but I believe the CIO collaboration secretary is the perfect vehicle to do that and to be able to interpret as you go on that. I think what we have successfully provided is a vision of how to collaborate and the purpose and value of collaboration, which I think was more our mandate in this project.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. McGarver. Looking to other members of council, if there's any comments or questions they may have? I am not seeing any. I do want to acknowledge when we began this project in earnest, we were meeting in person. And we went through a couple of exercises with the post-it notes. And I bring this up because I can only imagine how difficult it was for our administrations from the three municipalities, for Tantus and all the other consultants to work together and get this document put together, which will advance. And it, it does identify a number of opportunities, short, short-term, medium-term and long-term, or those aspirational goals that the document refers to. I just want to acknowledge the efforts and the time and the focus that everybody put into this. And I think it will serve the region well. put into this. And I think it will serve the region well. Mr. McGarver, you talked about some of the challenges that we're facing as municipalities. And that goes, you know, for every municipality in this province, I'd say across the country. And you did identify that Parkland County, you know, had a another obstacle and challenge with accelerated pace out of the the coal, but with the downturn in oil, gases, you identified now the pandemic. We need to look for efficiencies. We need to take this as an opportunity and identify where do we fit in and, you know, there's many aspects of the reports that, as Counselor Melnick said, can be operationalized through through a strategic and focused strategy that we develop and move forward, whether it's, you know, short term or to that long term goal. And I'm confident that we can position and future councils can position the region in a great manner where our residents and business communities are successful, the quality of life will be elevated and and this will be a destination for residents and businesses to locate in. So I just want to acknowledge all the work that was undertaken and the efforts from all of those involved, from staff to the consultants. So thank you so much. I'll look one final time to members of council to see if there's other comments and if there is not. Ms. Swain, if you have any, or Ms. A Berger, who's also online, certainly open the floor and welcome any comments she may have. And then, Mr. McGarver, I'll give you the final opportunity to close on this. But over to Ms. Swain.
Yeah, and to the chair, I'm not sure if Ms. A big not to put her on the spot, but if she has any comments. And if not, I will provide a few closing comments. I don't believe she does. She just sent me a message. No, I just want to obviously thank council for your leadership throughout this process. And once again, obviously to staff, like I said, I think that the information we have now and even just the repository of documents in itself, all will set us up for success in years to come. And obviously to Dave and his group just for their flexibility and as Dave alluded to at the start, the scope and feel and people at the table and and just how the project really shook out, it changed throughout the whole and entire project and Dave and his group, we know we picked the right partner just because they were so great at handling it throughout the whole process. So very much thanks to them. And for me personally, it was a very beneficial exercise just to understand the opportunities and challenges and realities that both Spruce Grove and Stony Plain are facing. And I really think it brought our administrations closer together and a better understanding of council priorities and administrative priorities. And I'm really looking forward to engaging in the work with the C O Secretariat. So I will pass it over to Mr. McGarver just to provide a few closing comments.
Thank you very much, Ms. Swain. Yeah, I really don't have a whole lot more to add other than I'd still like to go back. Obviously, the compliments to staff, I could go on ad nauseam. I'd like to compliment Parkland's council for the courage to undertake this project. And I say courage because when you open up the box to deal with your municipal neighbors, there has to be a certain level of trust that the others won't take advantage of it. I have a history, we're doing a lot of work with then A M D N C and now R M A. I think I have a pretty good understanding of the rural municipal issues. And to have this driven by a rural is really, I think that's really quite impressive. Not necessarily in your case, but oftentimes rules are seen as the cash box to pay for services in urban municipalities. And so I do, I reinforce the idea that that took courage to start this conversation where it could end with please write us a check. Now, your partners did not take it in that vein, and I think this has been incredibly constructive. With that compliment, I would offer a challenge to you and future Parkland councils. Keep going. Make this work. There are a million opportunities provided there. Some of the counselors, Counselor Melnick's comments, Counselor Johnson's comments, yours, your worship. There are so many possibilities of how you can provide a better, more efficient delivery of municipal services and support for your community available to you through these partnerships. And I recognize the county has other partnerships with Devon and and, you know, a number of other surrounding municipalities, but I would challenge your council to view collaboration as a key tool in the toolbox for any strategic ventures that you go into moving forward. It won't always fit, but at least a consideration of it, I think, is critical. And thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. McGarver. Ms. Swain.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to add one last thing and and just publicly provide my thanks on behalf of Parkland County to Western Economic Diversification. Obviously, this project would not have been possible without their support. We've been working with this group, oh, it must be for three or four years now. So the Coal Community Transition Group and that's led by Anna Curtis at Western Economic Diversification, and they've just been a tremendous support to both Parkland County and the tri region for the regional plan and also for some other projects we've been working on lately, including a broadband study for the county and a study with Paul First Nation, who are another one of our regional partners. And we have some other projects in the works with Western Economic Diversification, including some infrastructure projects. So I just wanted to publicly thank that group just for their support and flexibility and this project obviously would not have been possible without their funding.
Thank you. Once again, Mr. McGarver, thank you. You talked about the courage to move forward with this. And it's reciprocal. I mean, there's there will be opportunities. There'll be identified investments in rural areas in Parkland County. And I think all members of council and the three respective municipalities have to have the courage and vision to realize sometimes those investments might not be within our own municipal boundaries, but the benefit will be recognized across border. And sometimes politics is, you know, choosing between the disastrous and the impalatable. But it's having the courage to make those decisions. So once again, thank you so much for for your work. So we do have the motion that was put forward by Counselor Kabasiak. I will ask members of council, please raise your hand if you're in favor of that motion. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. With that, we've got about 12 minutes before our next scheduled appointment. Ms. Swain will move to item E two, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have Mr. Jeff Dyke, Chief Financial Officer, who will present the 2020 Budget Philosophy Draft Five Year Financial Plan, and we'll answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Swain. Mr. Mayor, members of council. The budget philosophy is used to establish the guidelines that once agreed upon provide the framework upon which administration will prepare the county's 2022 budget. The municipal budget will provide administration with the resources and authorization necessary to authorize the programs and service levels set by council as well as operationalize the broad objectives in the long term strategic plan. Departments will provide proposed program changes and new projects for the 2023 to 2027 operating plan and the 2023 to 2027 capital plan through the budget process. Economic challenges. Over the past number of years, federal and provincial regulatory changes have impacted the power generation industry as well as the oil and gas industries. These impacts, as well as other outside costs, have affected Parkland County and its ability to keep taxation at a reasonable level. For the last few years, Parkland County has been vocal about a large portion of taxation revenue. Over 15% is tied to coal mines and coal generation facilities. The impacts of the loss of revenue continue to affect our region and Parkland County directly. As further large percentage of taxation comes from the oil and gas support industries in the Atchison Industrial Park. The county has strongly advocated for a just transition for coal communities and has put forward the requirements both to the provincial and the federal government. Unfortunately, to this point, there has been insufficient support for the impacts that are being felt today. Provincial budget changes are also anticipated to impact Parkland County's budget. Recent changes include continued uncertainty around the municipal sustainability initiative capital grant funding, a reduction in the portion of court fines that municipalities will receive, and increased cost for rural crime prevention as a result of the phasing in of the new police service agreement. In response to these economic impacts, Parkland County will continue to review its current operations and make necessary adjustments. These adjustments will be guided by the principles of priority based budgeting. COVID-19 pandemic. The COVID-19 pandemic has had a pervasive impact on the economy. The resulting public health measures and policy decisions have resulted in disruptions to supply chain chains tend up consumer demand and the availability of low cost borrowing. In combination, these factors have given rise to an inflationary environment, which leads the county to reason the following for 2022. Significant increase to the cost of materials, supplies and equipment. Production volumes were impaired as a result of COVID-19, which translates into fewer products being available post COVID-19. Demand is currently outpacing supply, which results in higher prices. And higher prices are likely to persist until the production backlogs are cleared and supply chains are fully restored. Higher interest rates on new debt. The Bank of Canada's key interest rates are currently nearing all time lows. This has resulted in exceptionally low interest rates, which is fueling a housing boom in Alberta. With the threat of a housing bubble looming, the county anticipates that the Bank of Canada will take steps to slow down spending. At this time, it is not certain what the long term effects of the pandemic will be on the economy, assessed values or the programs and services required by residents. We will continue to forecast possible scenarios as assumptions are refined. These forecasts will be used to inform the 22 2022 budget and the five year plan. Key principles of five year planning. Parkland County has implemented a five year operating and five year capital plan. This process will be continued in the 2022 budget year. The plan includes expenses and revenues by major expense category and is updated annually. The communication to council and executive is provided to create better context for the budget process. Budget process. Administration will prepare a balanced budget where expenses, both operating and capital, are equal to revenues with the exception of non cash items. In order to include the finalized assessment and school requisition values, the budget is adjusted after the provincial budget is released and these figures become available. As part of the presentation to both the executive committee and council, departments will need to explain significant variances between the 2022 budget figures and the approved 2021 budget figures. Administration will prepare an operating budget on the basis of maintaining service levels. Priority based budgeting. Parkland County has been implementing priority based budgeting methodologies and will continue implementing this process in 2022. The goal is to communicate the programs and services that we provide to our residents, establish community priorities and allocate resources to these programs to ensure we are meeting resident needs. For the 2022 budget process, we will see the first steps in our public engagement plan take place over the summer months. We will also have an improved reporting available within the budget process for our financial information and service delivery have been fully aligned together through the Opticus project that occurred this year. Capital budgeting. Municipal capital such as roads, utilities and equipment are used to provide municipal services to residents in Parkland County. Parks and trails provide outdoor exercise and connect the community. Facilities provide recreation activities and places to gather. Graders keep snow off the road. Roads get us to and from work and school and fire trucks and hauls keep us safe. Capital budgeting principles. The budgeted amounts for capital should be the planned spend for the fiscal year. All carryforwards will be added to the 2022 budget after year end close. The sustainable spending level for 2022 is estimated at $17 million. Capital will be maintained to ensure public safety. Maintenance of current infrastructure is a priority and is funded annually to avoid infrastructure deficits. Projects that provide strategic benefit will be sought out. Federal and provincial mandates will be followed. Projects for sustainable and beneficial growth will be continually reviewed and recommended. And sustainable and responsible long term funding plans are developed in accordance with established policies. Budget initiatives. Budget initiatives provide the necessary information to enable decision makers to clearly understand new projects as well as programs and service levels. Only projects that are imperative or essential will be considered in the 2022 budget. Budget tools. Equipment lifecycle plans provide a method for the county to set aside funds for future replacement of existing equipment. Restricted surplus funds are used by the county to stabilize tax rate and to reduce reliance on debt borrowing. Debt financing will be considered based on a pay as you go philosophy. And inflation will be absorbed within existing budgets wherever possible. When setting the tax rate, the county wants to ensure that the residential and non residential taxation within the county remain competitive. Currently, the tax ratio is set at two to one. Administration is recommending a tax increase of 2.5% as a target due to the increase in the provincial police service agreement and the linear tax appeal. While this is while this will not fully address the potential changes projected in the budget, it is a key step in the plan to meet the needs of our residents while ensuring the county remains sustainable in the future. Administration will reevaluate the targets through the budget process. Tax rate comparison for residential properties. Parkland County Administration compiles information on tax rates set by other municipalities in the region. This comparison is used to ensure that the tax rate established by council is reasonable for the geographic area based on the goods and services provided. Parkland County continues to maintain the fifth lowest tax rate in the 13 municipalities listed. Please keep in mind that different levels of service dictate the amount of taxes required by a municipality. The key is to find the balance between service levels requested by residents and the taxation rate required to provide those services. The green bar on the graph represents today's rate in relation to the comparative municipalities. The orange bar represents the impact of the proposed 2.5% tax rate increase. Tax rate comparison for non residential properties. Parkland County continues to maintain the fourth lowest non residential tax rate of the 13 municipalities listed. Again, different levels of service dictate the amount of taxes required by the municipality. It is important to note that Parkland County continually monitors these rates to ensure the county remains competitive within the municipalities listed. And again, the green bar represents the current tax rate for Parkland County and the orange bar represents the projected 2.5% increase. Operating and capital five year planning. Parkland County has a strong history of prudent financial decision making, balancing residents and business needs with acceptable tax rate increases. As a result, the county is one of the lowest tax rates in the region while still maintaining the programs and services that residents value most. In order to ensure that prudent financial management continues, the county has developed a long term operating and long term capital plan. The importance of long term planning. Long term planning provides context to the executive team and to council. Long term planning combines financial realities with corporate strategies, uses assumptions based on operating practice and economic factors to forecast future years, identifies future financial capacities, encourages a long range perspective to ensure strategies that will achieve long term sustainability, helps mitigate the impacts of negative future events and maximizes potential to seize future opportunities. Long term planning philosophy. Financial plans are not multi year budgets. Financial plans include multi year forecasts that indicate future operational and financial trends, which result in high level estimates of future tax impacts. The goal of the forecast is to identify any imbalance between costs of providing new programs and competing new projects with funding available. Develop strategies, actions and policies to balance revenues and expenses over the short and long term. Identify proposed changes to the base budget in advance to allow decision makers time to make informed and strategic decisions. Forecasted tax impacts. Forecasted budget years often have high tax rate impacts as they include all requested projects that the county could pursue. This is not a cause for concern as financial plans are refined through the budget process. The primary benefit of long term planning is that it identifies future financial challenges and opportunities, allowing the county to plan and develop strategies, minimize challenges and take advantage. minimize challenges and take advantage of opportunities. The process involves department managers, frontline staff, executive team and information from external sources. The information received from departments is compiled and then refined using the priority themes identified by council. And the method. Long-term plans move through a methodical process from input drivers to the output forecast. These drivers include inflation, growth, new development and services, changes in legislation and many more. These drivers are identified, quantified and entered into the plan to determine their impacts. Highlights to the five-year forecast that's included as attachment three include for revenue. The taxation value represents the funds needed to balance the forecast and is not representative of an actual taxation requirement proposed in the future. Penalty increases for, as a result of the new enforcement initiative. Other revenue increases is the result of executing the gravel pit reclamation plan. For expenses, transfers to government agencies and organizations increase is the result of the rural policing agreement and recreational cost shares. Transfer to restricted surplus has increased largely due to lifecycle plan growth and inflation and the new enforcement initiative. Operating projects, we see decline slightly and then increase in the last two years. We will work with departments through the two thousand and twenty-two budget process to improve the data on the operating project piece of the forecast. Capital projects. The capital plan has been in place for a number of years and this process is quite refined and considers funding available as well as planned projects for each year. In light of the economic climate, projects represent base requirements only. We can see from the summary, the outcome of the plan on this slide. This shows the taxation impacts based on the base budget, operating projects, capital projects and the total requirement. The current forecast is much more reasonable than historical forecasts have been as far as the total tax rate implications in each year. The tax rate indicated is based on all projects and program changes that were requested by departments. These will be reviewed and prioritized based on council's priority themes through the budget process to ensure balance between tax elasticity and council priorities. Next steps. The plan will be updated over the summer to become a two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-seven plan. The plan will also see adjustments for forecast of future year assessment to better inform tax revenue projections, forecast of residential and business growth to better inform servicing of new infrastructure requirements, forecast of staffing requirements based on service growth, new growth and program changes, forecast of impacts of new regulatory requirements within provincial and federal announcements, and further refining drivers for inflation, deflation and service growth. The budget milestone timeline follows the same path as in the prior year. As is outlined on this slide, the final approval by council will be in November of two thousand and twenty-one. And with that, the proposed motions are before you and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dyke, for that presentation and we'll come back for questions. But we do have a scheduled appointment which we're a little late for. Um so my apologies to the presenter, but I will turn it over to Ms. Swain for the introduction to um the item under five point four. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Tony Kobisky, town of Devon CAO will present the Devon Recreation Facility Update and answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Yeah, good morning, Mayor and Council, and thank you, Laura, for the intro. Uh I was hoping not to answer any questions this morning. I'm just kidding. Um. Uh this is in follow-up to my May fourth presentation to your committee of the whole meeting. Uh following your direction, we did have opportunity to meet and discuss with your administration uh in prep for today's agenda. In terms of a brief history, approximately two and a half, almost three years ago, uh the town participated in a joint council meeting with, with Parkland uh being the host. And at that time, we had indicated that we applied for uh under the Red Complex for the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program. And uh that application required the town to commit all, if it's available, MSI dollars to make us uh or to allow us to get provincially endorsed uh to be reviewed by the federal government. Um the request at that time to Parkland County as a partner uh was one million dollars in two hundred thousand dollar installments over a five-year period uh which Parkland graciously supported uh if we are in fact approved. Um as, as you've learned, we, we did receive that approval. And the total estimated cost of the project at that time was eighteen point five million uh at the time of application. So in terms of an update from our last presentation, uh the town did go to tender to secure a construction management firm to help narrow down the costing uh to get closer to our budget parameters that we're going to be feeling comfortable with. Um we closed that tender on June second and we actually received twelve extremely competitive bids uh and counts, our council made a decision on June fourteenth uh toward the construction management piece to Bird Construction. And uh um it was extremely competitive and we're pretty happy. So now the work begins to try to work with TB, uh the um architectural uh and engineering to kind of refine those cost pieces to get us to that budget that we can all live with. So in the coming weeks, we'll do a further um update to your administration in terms of uh and we invite Parkland County Administration to be part of that process uh so we can review where we're at in terms of getting those cost certain pieces uh prior to us going to public tender. So it's part of the due diligence piece. So when we worked through the capital cash flow and based on our funding restrictions with the MSI program and the federal government funding, like I said earlier, it's great to get the funding pieces, but when they actually pay on reimbursement and they're only at forty percent, it means that the town of Devon is required to uh outflow a lot more capital than we um we were hoping to. And so that basically causes a significant uh stretching of our available resources. And I know that uh you mentioned Mary Shagis that Parkland was kind of going through the same thing as well uh with some of your other projects. So we're basically humbly requesting uh Parkland County Council to consider amending uh the previous support from one million dollars to one point five over a three-year period uh which uh which would help the town in immensely uh during the construction phase of the project. Uh that's where we're going to show our, our cash flow issues is during the construction phase and by having the, the money uh provided to us earlier, it's going to help us able to work uh the cash flow and, and get this project completed on time and on budget. The statement of operations once the thing is built uh is really looking very positive uh with the strength of uh the facility basing, being able to pay for itself and, and basically offset the expenses on the outdoor pool, which would be proposed to be covered. Um and that's with the assistance of the Hockey Academy that's going to be here uh taking uh the available dead ice in the mornings of both facilities. So lots of potential optimism here, but we, we definitely need some support uh on the capital side of it. And that's, that's really all I had to provide an update on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kobisky, for coming in and making the presentation this morning. Uh if I can get a member of council to put forward the motion and then we'll open up for uh comments or questions.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Daryl Hollands, Division Four. I move that the Town of Devon Recreation Facility Project Update Presentation be received for information as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Hollands, and open the floor up for questions or comments from members of council. Counselor Melnick.
Thank you. Thank you, uh Mr. Kobinsky for your presentation. So um your request is now one point five opposed to the one million in the capital funding. So what are your, what is your strategy should Parkland County Council um not be in the position to um come to that dollar value that you're asking for?
Your worship uh through to Counselor Melnick. Uh great question. Um that's really why we've hired our construction management firm to really drill down those costs so that we can get closer to uh the budget that we applied for, which was the eighteen point five. When we were speaking to the architectural firms, they were giving us a range anywhere from eighteen point five to twenty-one million. And realizing quite frankly, that if we're into the twenty million dollar range, it's going to be pretty tough go to even make this project move forward. And we would probably end up having to significantly reduce uh scope of the project to be more in line with the funding parameters. So if the Parkland County is not able to go to one point five and, and you're able to stick with only the one million, it's something we can live with. It just means that we will have to um hopefully our construction management firm can uh reduce costs somewhere to, to bring it more into line. Did they ask of three, of one point five was simply to realize that the application is over three years old and it was based on estimate three years ago? And because of the volatile nature of steel and lumber, we felt that it just kind of would be proactive, I guess, to simply see if, if it's available uh to ask Parkland to see if you'd be willing to um add a little bit more into the pot uh if it's available. And if not, it's something we can live with, with the original ask. It is that what's really helpful to us is the three years as opposed to the five.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any further questions or comments from members of council? Mr. Kobisky, you were uh mentioned initially, the uh budget forecast was eighteen point five. It's now in a range up to twenty-one million. How much of that is, and you talked about some of the volatility and in um the construction industry itself largely um materials, how much of that is attributed to uh the increase that we've seen in um the steel prices and the lumber prices?
Your worship, that was one of the questions we asked um our uh, our winning selection on the construction management piece. Some of the bigger firms we're finding actually have ample supply of some of these materials already in their yard. And uh that was one of the uh that was one of the reasons why we went with the, the larger firm uh to see if that would help us in this, in this regard. Um and we're hoping um like they're, they're in the they, they have several projects. So there's ample supplies there. You have like the steel beams and some of the steel planning work that uh you normally would see on some of these type of projects. But they were talking about anywhere from uh twenty-five to thirty percent uh cost fluctuations on some of these materials, depending on where they're sourcing them from. So they, they, in some cases, uh some trades are only holding their prices for a week. Uh and if they don't basically sign off a contract within a week, they can't hold their prices beyond that. So that's kind of the, some of the indicators early that we're getting. Uh more information will be shared with your administration once, once we get more into it and once we have follow-up meetings with uh Bird Construction.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions. I'll just maybe there's some round steel pipe that could be used in exchange for some of the beams. Uh there's probably a surplus that could be uh acquired at a fairly significant discount.
Yeah, I would think so, eh?
I'm not seeing any, any other uh member of council uh having questions or comments, so I will ask the question. Those in favor of that motion that is carried. Thank you. And then we'll move to item D one and Ms. Swain um will turn to you for a quick introduction on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Dave Cross, Director or General Manager of Agriculture Protective and Community Services will now bring forward the Town of Devon's capital cost share request, and he is prepared to answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Actually, I'm going to turn things over to Sarah Mate, uh Director of Community Services, who's going to walk us through the report and then her and I will be pleased to answer any questions council may have. Thanks. Sarah, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross and Ms. Swain. As part of the recreation cost share agreements we have with our municipal partners, council may at their discretion provide funding support for recreation amenities that are located in neighboring jurisdictions, but will provide significant benefit to Parkland County residents. Administration received the original request from the Town of Devon in two thousand and twenty to expand the Dale Fisher Arena into a multi-use recreation facility. At that time, council approved a one million dollar contribution to be dispersed over a five-year term. The Town of Devon has since asked that Parkland County increase the contribution to one and a half billion dollars to be paid over a three-year term. Administration has reviewed the documentation provided by the town and sees a benefit in this project to Parkland County residents who live within a thirty-minute drive to the Town of Devon. The recommendation is to accelerate the already approved contribution of one million dollars to a three-year term. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Mate. And if I can get a member of council to put that motion on the floor, now open it up for discussion and debate.
Mr. Mayor, it's Counselor John McNabb, Division Five. Bring forward a motion that council approved the Town of Devon major capital cost sharing request of one million to be paid in equal installments over three years beginning in two thousand and twenty-two for the multi-use recreation facility as presented. And if I just ask a question here, Mr. Mayor.
What is yours, Congressman?
Yeah, um this would be to um our administration, uh Ms. Mate, in regards to um the extra dollars that are being requested. Um I know they're not part of the motion here, but um i- if, if that was going to happen, those dollars, where would they come from um over that three-year period um in, in your perspective?
Thank you uh through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor McNabb. Um I may ask Mr. Cross for some assistance with answering this question. I do believe that the funding would come from tax dollars. Mr. Cross, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Thanks, Ms. Mate. And I know Mr. Dyke's on the, on the call as well, but uh I do believe that they would be tax dollars or if there's room out of our municipal uh or our facility reserve, that's where uh it would come from as well, but that's funded by tax dollars as well. So in the end, it would be tax dollars that would probably be supporting uh the funding for this. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And so um if we had room in our um reserves in regards to um recreational facilities, um I, I'm not too sure what the reserves called, but um there, there is um possible dollars sitting in reserve for recreational type facilities. Um i- is there enough room there for them?
Um. M- Mr. Mayor, to your Counselor McNabb, uh one of the reasons that we wanted to try and hold the line with this request is we know, of course, we've approved a capital cost share request from Drayton Valley for a, a new indoor pool. We also are aware of projects that are underway uh in the city of Spruce Grove and Town of Stony Plain and are anticipating capital cost share requests uh from those municipalities as well. So not knowing uh what level of request those are going to come in at, we wanted to uh, to be careful and, and hold the line with what the council had previously approved and move it up from a five-year term to a three-year term as a, as a way to try and better support the Town of Devon and, and still um you know, keep, keep uh, I guess, keep tabs on our, our reserves and wait and see what comes in from Spruce Grove and Stony Plain to make sure we're not overextending ourselves. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cross, and, and that's a very good answer. Um just, just um that there's a lot of other um municipalities that we're sharing dollars with in regards to recreation and all, all other type of um um wants and needs. Um so it's, it's, it's um a, a good answer on um regards to um that it's not just one area. There's multiple different areas, you know, even, even our, our cost shares with Devon and um and Brazo County and Drayton Valley, Yellowhead, you know, it, it's, and Stony Plains, of course, so it. Yellowhead, you know, it's, and Stony Plains, of course. So it's a, it's a big picture. Thanks very much for the answer.
Looking to other members of council for comments or questions. Counselor Jensen and then Counselor Melnick.
Sorry, I can find my raise hand. I just want to acknowledge this while and certainly appreciate Counselor McNabb's inquiry there. And as we know, there are many residents on the east side of the county that travel to Devon frequently. I can certainly speak to myself and the probably thousands and thousands of times I've driven over that bridge. So there's a lot of population there that go into Devon, go to school in Devon, dance, banking services. And I'm excited to see the project move forward in Devon, but also certainly acknowledge the, the population that, that goes that way. And that's my only comment, just that it will be well utilized by Parkland County residents, I'm sure, and look forward to seeing it. Thanks.
Counselor Melnick.
Thank you. I think one of the other things that needs to be said as well is that we've just received the Village of Womans. So now it is a, a Parkland County area that as we do our strategic planning in and around that area, there may be some recreational needs there as well. So it's not just Spruce Grove, Stony Plain. We may have additional recreational needs as well in our, our urban centers of our hamlets. So thanks.
Any additional comments or questions from members of council? I am not seeing any. I, I will support the motion and the accelerated dispersment of the funds from five years to three years. And part of that is, you know, Counselor McNabb identified a number of the recreational cost sharing. There's a, and also the fact that there's other cost sharing agreements that we have entered in and will continue to get requests for. But one of the things, and Mr. Dyke went through the presentation on the budget and the budget philosophy and identified that our sustainable capital budget for 2022 is $17 million. That's down roughly $6 million from what we were previously advised of. So we're feeling constraints and we're also feeling additional requests as Mr. Cross had alluded to. We know that there were, we have a strong idea that there will be requests from, coming from both Stony Plain and Spruce Grove for recreational facilities. And we still have our other capital infrastructure that we need to maintain and new infrastructure projects as well. Counselor Melnick.
Thanks. And I forgot to mention too, also, you know, that's why I asked Mr. Kowinski as to, you know, strategy, should Parkland County not be able to go forward with the 1.5 as being requested? And have the assurance that they would be able to make it work. So, so I, that was another piece within my thought process. Thanks.
Look to members of council one final time. And I'm not seeing any more comments. We do have the motion on the floor. Please indicate your, if you're in support of this motion by raising your hand. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. We'll take, we'll take a five-minute recess in advance of 10:30, pardon me, 11:30 and we'll resume with item B2, which is the Edmonton Global Air Service Opportunity Fund request.
Mayor Shagis, can we just finish up the E2 so that that staff members could leave if they needed to before we go to a break?
We could do that, sure. So I'll turn the floor back over to Mr. Dyke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Happy to at this point answer any questions that you may have and the proposed motions are before you as well.
Thank you. So with that, if I can get a mover for the first motion attached to this agenda item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's Tripti on the council for Division 6. I'll put forward the motion that council approved the 2022 budget philosophy as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, and open up for questions and comments. Not seeing any, just one comment that I do have. The, the report and the philosophy is very inward focused, talks about, you know, the capital expenditures and the service levels for Parkland County. It's, it was silent and glaringly missing from my perspective is opportunities to look at those partnerships with neighboring municipalities. We received earlier today, the report from Tantus talked about the tri-municipal regional plan and the opportunities to find some efficiencies and some cost savings while still maintaining service levels. So, and we've had the discussion at the 30,000 square, 30,000 foot level. But where are we as far as the executive administration with the conversations with their colleagues? Not just at Stony Plains, Spruce Grove, but other municipalities looking at opportunities where we can recognize those cost savings by, through joint initiatives and joint service delivery.
And, and through the chair, I can answer some of that question. That's something we are looking at right now. We will be discussing it with council at our strategic planning session on Monday, just about some joint opportunities with our municipal partners. And obviously with the conversation around the regional plan, we are looking at those opportunities with Spruce Grove and Stony Plain, but then with some of our other partners such as Laxane and Yellowhead, Drayton Valley, just trying to take more of a look at some joint opportunities with those municipalities and then looking at our regional county partners. So Strathcona, Liddoo County and Sturgeon County and just some opportunities that we can work on together. And, you know, some of that will be economic development driven and some of that will be looking at services.
Thank you for that, Ms. Swain. Any other comments or questions from members of council? See none. Please raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. That is carried unanimously. Can I get a mover for the second motion, please? Counselor Jensen, would you like to put that?
I've lost my agenda.
Or Counselor Kabasi?
Yeah, my apologies. My laptop. Mayor Shagis, I can put that forward.
Please, thank you.
Sure, sure. Counselor McNabb, Division 6. I'll put forward the motion that council received the draft five-year financial plan and tax rate analysis for information as presented.
Thank you. Comments or questions on that motion? Not seeing any. Again, please raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. We'll take a three to four minute recess. Just waiting for Counselor McNabb. Once he's back, we'll call the meeting back to order. Thank you. So I will call the meeting back to order and we'll move to item five, pardon me, B2. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Swain for introduction on that item.
I was on mute, sorry. So thank you, Mr. Chair. As you are aware, conversations are ongoing in the region about the establishment of an air services opportunity fund to support the Edmonton International Airport and its recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. As a result of the pandemic, the region's direct air connectivity fell more than 90%. This has made it challenging for businesses to connect with investors, suppliers and customers. The discussions that have occurred to date are being led by Edmonton Global. On May 27th, 2021, a trilateral meeting was held with regional leaders to explore opportunities for recovery. Mayors of the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board, the EMRB, and CAOs from the board, Edmonton Global members and executives, as well as Edmonton International Airport Board members and executives, discussed opportunities for immediately resuming air connections to the world. To attract and support businesses and promote economic growth in the Edmonton metro, in the Edmonton region, strong passenger and cargo routes are critical to ensuring this region remains globally competitive. Sorry, I had a little visitor that popped in. By creating an air services opportunity fund, the intention is to accelerate its return to pre-pandemic air connectivity levels, which will help businesses in the region looking to restart operations. Sorry, just one second here. Um, so a couple of other items I will cover as part of this. So how the fund will be used. Funding from municipal partners will be utilized to reduce the resumption startup risks for airlines such as contributing to airline costs like aircraft leases, ownership, IT costs, fuel, check-in staff and ground handling. These costs and the risks associated for airlines began with their first flight. I know there were also some questions with the fund related to return on investment. So Edmonton Global and the EIA have calculated that collectively the region is expected to see 7,000 jobs create, created. And it increased the GDP of 415 million with a total economic impact of 811 million. And obviously calculating the ROI for each individual municipality is difficult with a fund like this. I know there were also some questions last week about funding and accountability mechanisms. So just a couple of points on that one, too. Regional CAOs, EIA and EMRB and Edmonton Global are collaboratively building an accountability and governance model to administer the fund. The process for making financial contributions to the fund will be determined in collaboration with regional CAOs, EIA, EMRB and Edmonton Global. All parties will commit to an open and transparent accountability process with Edmonton Global shareholders, with reporting taking place at each Edmonton Global annual general meeting and the mid-year update. And then lastly, obviously, fund contribution is something that was discussed. And so Parkland County is being asked to contribute $491,664 over three years, starting with $98,333 in year one. The fund is established for a three-year period, which would end in June 2024, and the last invoice would be sent to municipalities in March 2023. There were some questions about fund extension and if the fund would continue. So Edmonton Global has stated that this fund will not be extended beyond June 2024. And any funds that remain will be returned back to contributing municipalities in accordance with the cost sharing formula. And with that, I will now pass it over to council for any questions or discussion that council may have. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Malcolm Bruce from Edmonton Global and Mr. Tom Ruth from Edmonton International Airport, who will be on the line and can answer any other questions council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. So if I can get a mover for the motion, then we'll kind of open it up for comments or questions.
Sure, I can make that motion, Mr. Mayor. And I'll move that council approve the funding request for Edmonton Global Air Service Opportunity Fund by Edmonton Global in the amount of $497,632 to be funded by future operating restricted surplus over three years as Parkland County's contribution of a $15 million air services opportunity fund is presented.
Thank you. And I'll open it up for comments or questions either to administration or to Mr. Bruce from Edmonton Global or Mr. Tom Ruth from Edmonton International Airport. Counselor Kabasi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Council did have a chance to discuss this. We also received information about how the financial arrangement should be held in terms of the accountability. And I have had opportunity to read just recently the consideration that was made by Liddoo County, as well as options of St. Albert and where City of Edmonton landed. And given our tie to the air industry and recovery from the post-pandemic, I don't believe we can afford not to participate. So I'm fully supportive of this going forward. I think that there are assurances in place that the funds that will be utilized are going to help us as a broader region in our economic recovery. Thank you.
Counselor McNabb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In, in regards to the fund, and I'm not too sure who the question be directed to. In regards to the funds, is there, was there any talk through Edmonton Global on regards to creating a, a fund pool, if you will, in regards to helping other businesses out that, that may come along and recognize that there's been some kind of catastrophic failure in the community? catastrophic failure in the community in regards to COVID, I guess. But it could be anything else that require a little bit of assistance or a little bit of movement that would definitely benefit the region as a whole, not specific to EIA. But anybody else that are, could this lead to building a pool of dollars that go out there and and help others? You know, I'm struggling a little bit in regards to, you know, singling out one organization over another. I recognize that the huge economic benefit that EIA has, but there is other industries out there that are having the same economic problems. And, and, you know, just a single one out, I'm struggling a little bit with that. But is there any conversation in regards to building a pool of dollars that that and or resources that can go out and help others other than just single, single-use type perspective?
So, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to try and answer that question, if I may.
Yes, please, Mr. Bruce.
Thank you. So first of all, really, really good question. And I would say to you that generally, the conversation did not come up with that specific idea in mind. And I think partially because there are many other programs federally and provincially that are trying to support businesses through COVID, and that includes most recently with the Alberta Jobs Grant Program. For example, if you hire a new person, you can claim up to 25% of that salary back over 52 weeks. So I think there are a number of programs that are out there. And if I may, just to say that it doesn't mean we, this wouldn't be worth having a conversation at another time if that's what the shareholder group wanted to have a conversation about. Because I think, you know, like always, there's, we should never park an idea that may have merit that we shouldn't discuss fully because there may be other opportunities. But in this particular case, we had not. But if I may just emphasize the, this is not about EIA. This is really about the region in terms of air services and connectivity. So EIA is the medium of which air services are delivered for this region, but it's really about the regional businesses, the regional visitor economy, and the community at large that we're really speaking to when it comes to the air services. Because we all use those, those, those particular flights. So I think, Counsel, that that's kind of the way we've, we've approached it, that it's, it's not about EIA. It's really about our ability as a region to get back into the fight when it comes to international planes once we get up. And I think importantly, you know, this most recent decision yesterday or the day before that indicated that, you know, if you're double vaccinated, you can be quarantined, you don't need to quarantine anymore. You know, we've got some freedom and more travel and everything. That's all great for individuals. The problem is it doesn't impact EIA because we're not allowed to fly in and out of EIA yet. So it continues to only favor those four airports that are currently open to international travel. And that's really where we're starting to find that there's a real inequity about the way that our, our economy is being treated versus vis a vis other economies that we are really being disadvantaged here in terms of our recovery. Thank you.
Questions or comments from other members of council? Counsel Melnick.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. I want to start off with the very beginning piece of saying that we understand and recognize the importance of an airport in close proximity to Parkland County. I'm going to start that. I do recognize that. I, I asked this question at a recent Economic Diversification Committee. And I had mixed response as to whether or not Parkland County should, should participate or they should not participate. And, and one of the things that was said was just remember Parkland County, you have shareholders as well. Your shareholders are each and every resident in Parkland County. And as you, as you make your decisions on this or any other item, you have a responsibility back to your shareholders. So I take that very seriously. I guess for myself, I struggle a bit in the understanding that the fund itself and there is a, well, if everybody puts their money in, because there's a cap as to, there's no extra request if some, another municipality opts out as to what is, we'll just work with whatever money we have in the pool. And I struggle with the idea as to the true strategy when it is, well, if we have 10 million, we work with 10 million. If we have 25 million, we, or 15 million, we'd work with 15 million. So in, in my brain, I struggle with that. I look and kind of go, so really, what is that long-term benefit that we are really going to realize? If the moving points are so far and far, you know, between, there's $5 million difference between a 10 and a 15 million. And, and how do you build a strategy, understanding that there is that big variant there? I think that one of the other pieces that I have some difficulty with is that no matter what, whether we put the money in this fund or not, there's, there's another level of government or multiple levels of government that actually have a say as to whether international flights are going to come here or they're not. You know, when they get to open up that border and when they don't, when, when do we get to fly in, when we don't? So I think that there's a big responsibility in and around the provincial government in to making sure that the area airport is made whole, not necessarily an individual taxpayer as a responsibility in the region. We know that the international airport serves much more of a region than, than just the 13 municipalities around. So it does serve that northern region. It serves all of the, it serves Yellowhead County. It serves, you know, Brazos County. And, and so to place it on individual shareholders, Parkland County shareholders as a tax line item, I struggle with that a bit, yet I understand the importance of having an airport there. So there's, there's a lot of unanswered questions still for me as to getting it to the, the real why. And, you know, I heard a comment the other day on the news, and it was Premier Kennedy, Kenny speaking and talking about how there has been some unfair pieces that have impacted the EIA in the Edmonton region differently than what Calgary has been impacted because they do have the, the international airport. So I think there's another way of getting what we need to get to happen at EIA than just going to our individual taxpayers. So thanks.
Any other questions or comments from members of council? Counsel McNabb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just in regards to, I guess the dollars, you know, they're, they're municipal tax, tax dollars. And maybe I just a little unclear of what the goal, what, what, what the use of the dollar should be. I understand I'm going out to bring international flights in. But it's still regulated by the federal government and the, the issues there. Is some of those dollars going to be used, and this would be for EIA or, or Mr. Bruce in regards to, or some of those dollars going to be used to advocate to the federal government in regards to the restrictions that are placed on EIA? Is that a model or a plan? Maybe you could share that with us.
Happy to start. So the intent is the, the investment that we're asking of you and, and your, and your ratepayers. And I think that's a, Counsel, that's a really good sort of way to phrase it because your shareholders are your, your constituents. And, and so the intent is to use that only to be able to draw back those individual flights. Advocacy, though, both federally and provincially, is an ongoing initiative that continues to this day. One of the takeaways from the trilateral board meeting was that there needed to be a harder line in terms of our ask of the provincial government. I will say to you that that document is now complete, and it's under the, yeah, EM, or correction, Edmonton Global Board Chair Review right now. So the intent is to have that sent out on behalf of the, of the region to the premier and a number of cabinet ministers. Additionally, federally, we continue to advocate both through our two senators, Senators Simons and Senator Black here in the, in Alberta, as well as our MPs that are, that are representative, not of the official opposition. So we continue to push very hard in addition to what we've already done. For example, the letter that was signed by your mayor on behalf of your council in March to the Prime Minister, saying that, look, we really needed to get this airport back up and running. So the advocacy at all levels of government continues apace. But the fund itself is very much focused on delivery of additional air access to, for international key strategic routes in and out of this region.
And I might follow up on that, just to, to mention one, the fund will only be utilized clearly if we if we capture one of these flights and other flights as, as part of the fund. And then with the four airport restriction that we're dealing with right now, that will get lifted. We're just all working very, very hard on advocacy to make sure it lifts sooner rather than later. And then, once it is lifted, and even, even now, just having conversations with airlines to ensure that we can induce them to come back for recovery. And that recovery will permeate throughout our entire region. It'll help the visitor economy. It'll help the business traffic. It'll help cargo and e-commerce. It will, it will, it will pay back many times over in terms of what will help the, our, all the individual citizens of our region.
Yeah, thank you. If, if I may have a follow-up to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
One of my questions in regards to the funds. I, I just have a question in regards to, you know, we're trying to win some of these international flights back. I get that. But I imagine these airports, whether it's Calgary or wherever, they want to keep them. And, and whoever we're trying to win back or win over, those organizations are trying to keep them. And, you know, if they went down the same path of, of gathering dollars from the local municipalities that benefit from them, it could end up being a vicious cycle, vicious circle. And that's kind of where my, my, my thought was going, was, you know, if, if we're going to throw dollars into, municipal dollars into this, there's nothing saying that, you know, fair business around Calgary, around their regional board, they're doing, not doing the same thing. And it just ends up into a big vicious cycle, no end to the dollars. So it's kind of where I was thinking.
Maybe I can address that a little bit on that. Is what we're trying to do is to induce these, these international flights to come back. What's happened in the, in the airline industry and for the airlines is there, there are many, many planes right now that are, that are parked. They're, they're not flying anywhere. And as this recovery starts to gain some steam, we're at the early stages of that, the airlines are going to be deciding where those planes come back. And so we are, we are looking to make sure that, that we're prioritized in terms of that service coming back into our region. Putting those planes back up in the air and benefiting our region.
Any additional comments from members of council? Couple of questions I have. So, and I want to thank Edmonton Global for having the shareholder meetings and providing some of the updates and building the case and identifying the urgency here and the impacts. If Edmonton International Airport isn't successful in securing additional flights, we know, we know the economic consequences. Do you have a question? If we're not able to secure those flights or if we see further losses of international flights, is there a potential that that will impact some of the domestic carriers decisions and the number of domestic flights will be seen into EIA?
I can answer that, Mayor. Absolutely, there's a, there's an impact on domestic and international. There, we have as a fifth largest airport in Canada, 60% larger than the, than the sixth largest, is that regional feed that, that comes into our airport from surrounding cities, particularly in Western Canada, but, but also in other areas and in Northern Canada, help feed the international flights. So that, that is important. It's a symbiotic relationship. So, you know, we, our ability to induce as many of these international flights to return will have a trickle-down effect in a positive way. I'm just reversing the question a bit in a positive way in terms of the economic output. Again, not, not even just for passengers, but also cargo and e-commerce. And there's, and the visitor economy and all the jobs associated with that and, and new business. So that's why it's so important that we, we act now. And nobody, it's nobody's fault we had COVID. I mean, it's, it's clearly devastated, particularly the aviation industry. So, so we're just all, hopefully, as a region, doing what we can to, to make sure we bring this back so we can, we can get our economy rolling again.
Thank you. I will be supporting this motion before us. We just had a presentation earlier in our council meeting with the tri-municipal regional plan that was developed and finalized, final report was submitted to Parkland County today. And it's going to our tri-regional partners, Stony Plain and Spruce Grove. But one of the things in the competitive review that was identified was, you know, the, the importance of EIA as a contributor, an important asset for us to be in a strong global competitive position. They recognized specifically the number of US, Asia-Pacific, and other international connections and the cargo capabilities, which is a huge, huge benefit to the tri-municipal region and certainly, I think, to the Edmonton Metropolitan area as a whole. And the other thing I do want to state as well is just the mandate of EIA, which is to facilitate economic prosperity in the region. I think that was identified here recently, that one of the outcomes is the announcement of the new food manufacturing facility. And certainly, Parkland County is well-positioned to capitalize on opportunities in the agriculture and agri-food sectors. And, and finally, Counsel Melnick alluded to the conversation that took place at the Economic Diversification Committee meeting. And there were four members that spoke, three spoke in favor of supporting this request. One spoke against it, saying it's taxpayers' money that they're shareholders. And I did inform that particular member that Parkland County has supported private business. I also allude to the fact that this isn't a private business. It's a community-based, not-for-profit. But Parkland County has provided financial support and incentives to attract business into Parkland County. This is no different. And we, we, you know, have made, like I said, those investments. And we're going to recognize substantial tax revenues in the future and return several times over. So I will be supporting this motion. Thank you. And looking one more time to members of council, if there's any additional comments or questions that they do have.
Thanks again. I just really want to articulate one more last, one last time that I do understand the benefit of EIA. I just think that there is another avenue of, of funding this. I think if you, if you look at the provincial government, if, you know, in the past, the mayor and, and other councils have always talked about the downloading of what's happening with, with provincial governments, federal governments into municipalities. And, and if we are quick to unanimously all the time, accept their responsibilities of making sure that pieces work forward in the right manner, they'll continue to download. So just wanted to make that comment. Thanks.
Any closing comments from members of council? See none. Before I do call the question, I do want to thank Mr. Bruce and Mr. Ruth for being present today and answering the questions from members of council. So with that, Do you have the motion on the floor? I'd ask members of council to please raise your hand if you're in support of that motion. And those against. One more time, those in favor, please? Those against?
It is. I think. Frozen.
My, my screen is frozen. I didn't see response from Councillor Kabasi, nor from Councillor Hollins. I'll ask one final time, and if not, we might have to get those members to.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I believe Counselor Hollins is frozen and I would assume that Counselor Kabasiak is the same. So we might just want to give them a.
I see some movement now. So their screens are now unfrozen. So I'll ask the question again. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And that's four in favor and two against. So that motion is carried. Thank you. And Mr. Ruth and Mr. Bruce, enjoy the rest of your day and I'll wish you all the best in. Your efforts in attracting those flights back into EIA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. So with that, we will move. To item C two, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Wayne for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have Mr. Jeff Dyke, Chief Financial Officer, who will now present by law. Twenty twenty-one dash two zero, twenty twenty-two fees and charges and answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Swain, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As part of the budget process, all user fees are reviewed and updated on an annual basis. By the department responsible for administering those fees. The annual review ensures that fees are consistent with changes to service levels. Delivery methodology and all costs associated with the delivering of that service. A user fee review is guided by the following principles. The benefit principle. Those who receive the benefit from the county-provided good or service should pay for that good or service according to the level of value received. The cost recovery principle. The total cost of providing a good or service, including operating expenses. Should be a starting point when calculating user fees. Management of demand principle. Fees have a role in managing the level of demand for a service. Too high of a fee can discourage use of the service. That benefits the community. In these cases, the county may direct that a fee be subsidized or waived. And the comparability principle. An analysis of fees charged for similar services provided by the county's neighboring municipalities ensures fees are comparable to other providers. Utility rates should be set at levels adequate to cover operating costs, meet debt obligations and provide funding for capital improvements. All Wobnum specific rates have been included in the fees and charges by law. Overall, for twenty twenty-two, fees and charges have not significantly changed. Many departments took the opportunity to streamline and improve the user friendliness of the document. There have been some small inflation increases, some verbiage changes and some changes based on the principles discussed. Attachment two includes all changes made to the bylaw. Department directors are here to answer any questions council may have. The key changes I will go through now include agriculture schedule A. Increased deposit for the boomless sprayer from one hundred and twenty dollars to five hundred dollars. Engineering Services Schedule C. Standardized Property Access Approach Application Fee to four hundred and nine dollars. Planning and Development Services Schedule E. Reduce the re-inspection fee cost to one hundred and fifty-nine dollars from three hundred and seventeen dollars. Community Services Schedule H. Harmonize non-resident and resident fees for the Meridian Sports Park. And Whistlepool fees have been reviewed, new fees have been added for rentals and existing fees have been adjusted as required. Jubilee Hall fees have been adjusted to align with other county recreational facilities. Water and wastewater Schedule J. Wobnum rates are currently presented as the same as the prior year. These rates will be brought back to council in the fall. This will provide administration with time necessary to harmonize the rates across the county. And whistle water treatment upgrade has been removed as the associated debenture has been fully paid back. Community Sustainability Services Schedule K. Biophysical Review for Major Development has increased to two thousand five hundred dollars from five hundred fourteen dollars and eighty cents. Corporate and Shared Services Schedule M. Added clarity around fees for the sale of county lands and the addition of grazing and hay permits over ten acres. With that, the proposed motions are before council for consideration and administration is available to answer any questions you have on the bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dyke. Can I get a mover for the first motion, please?
I'm the Chair, Counselor Kabasiak, Division Three. I moved up by law twenty twenty-one dash twenty, received first reading.
Thank you. And opening up for questions or comments. Counselor McNabb and then Counselor Melnick. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. In regards to, we just got a couple of questions, not specific, but I'll, I'll just identify the specific. Items that triggered my thought here is in regards to the, the. I wrote it down here, just give me a sec. Oh, fees and charges on, in regards to the, the camping fees in regards to the Cold Diamond and Memorial. Meridian Sports Park and. Just looking for consistency in, in the, in the document and. What, what I seen here is maybe a little bit differences between the Meridian Sports Park and the Cold Diamond Park. And then, you know, having said that, going right into the cemetery fees of Wobnum, there's a, a list of services that are being provided or. Is our intention to relook at all those and, and make a decision whether we're still going to consistently provide those services? Or are we going to open that up and provide some of those services to some of our other cemeteries out there? I, I didn't want it to be specific to those items, but it just, on the consistency of. Being across the county consistent or across our, our urban centers consistent. I was just wondering what the thoughts are there? And I also recognize that we're looking at. Continually looking at Wobnum's. Fees and schedules to how, how to blend them into the county. I'm just wondering what those, that thought, thought is on those particular items and or whatever else might be out there.
And through the chair to Counselor McNabb, I believe we have Dave Cross and we may also have Sarah Mate on the line and. One of them are likely able to answer that question.
Your worship to you through Counselor McNabb. I'll ask Ms. Mate to respond. I believe she's on with us.
I don't see Ms. Mate on.
No. Okay. Mr. Mayor, to you through Counselor McNabb. I'll, I'll, I'll. Speak to the best of my ability, what I know, and then if Ms. Mate joins us, you can add in. In terms of the camp, camping fees out at Wobnum. It is a different type of campsite. At Meridian, we have an open field versus actual developed type sites in Wobnum. And I believe that's where the difference is. We're just kind of maintaining the, you know, what was been charged in the past there and reflecting that difference in the setup. In terms of the cemetery fees. I'll have to wait for Ms. Mate to respond to those logs in. I know we were trying to align some of the services, services provided through Wobnum greatly exceeded services we provided or other cemeteries. So we're looking to. Bring some of those things into alignment. The other complicating factors around the columbarium is that we don't have columbariums in other spots. And so we need to make sure we reflected that difference with Wobnum as well. So. Hope that answers the campground piece. And again, I'll look for Ms. Mate to respond to the cemetery piece when she joins us. Thank you, Mr. Cross. Mr. Mayor, if I may. Just do a response here to Mr. Cross's comments here. And I didn't want to be specific to the campground. Or, or the cemetery, just looking for consistency. And just as I read the regulations of, of the Wobnum Cold Diamond Sports Park and campground. You know, it looks to me that it's some sort of group camping. I've never been there. I don't know what it looks like, but it's some sort of group camping and open field type. Perspective, just the way it's written. And to me, it looked like it was the same type of camping. And, and my, my thought is just being consistent. If, if we're working towards being consistent across the county, and, and of course, we're, we're not. In the camping business, but we, we're left with these campgrounds, whether it's Meridian that our people are going to use and. Use it and or this Cold Diamond Sports Park. I'm sorry, I don't know what it looks like. And it, it's probably not much different than our, our, our community halls allowing camping also. You know, are we going to be consistent across the board? That, that's all I was asking. And, and you don't have to answer that. I, I know we'd be looking forward to. Look, relooking at these in the future. I, I get that. And I was just pushing the idea that if we're going to do one thing. In one area, we should be consistent across the county. No different than cemeteries. Duly noted. Thank you, Counselor McNabb.
And just to Mr. Cross, I believe Ms. Mate has joined the call.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. Could you please repeat the question at hand?
Thank you, Ms. Mate. The question was in regards to the, the, I think I got answered on the campground perspective, but on cemeteries, are we working forward? For the service level of cemeteries throughout the county in regards to the fees of Wobnum? Are we trying to be consistent? I'm sure we're, we're working towards some sort of consistency is what I was getting at. In regards to the fees of the cemeteries in Wobnum and or the rest of the county.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor McNabb. We are absolutely working towards that. One significant change between the Wobnum Cemetery and Parkland County Cemeteries is the columbarium. So that is something that will always be different, but other than that, we are working towards harmonized rates for all county residents, for all county facilities.
Thank you, Ms. Mate. So, so if I may, Mr. Mayor, does that involve an individual, a staff member to. To be on call for those openings and closings, it looks like? And or is that a volunteer position?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor McNabb. That, that is exactly what we're working through right now with the columbarium, especially. We will require staff to do the openings and closings. Funeral homes won't do that. So that's exactly what we're analyzing and working through right now.
Thank you. Counselor Melnick.
Thank you. Two, two questions, please. And one, maybe one of the items that. If I get any questions or a few questions are, is around the sewage dumping in. From the subdivisions into the. Portal here in Entwistle. So my question is not so much about the fees of, of what that is, but. Are we realizing a true benefit as to that dumpage? Like. Are they paying their full cost, I guess, is, is my piece or, or how's that going? So that when a resident contacts me, it's, you know, of course, it's usually one of the. The trucking companies that says, hey, your rates are too high at the sewage lagoon. Therefore, you know. It's impacting my, my personal pocketbook huge. What is that answer? Do we have anything there?
And through the chair to Counselor Melnick, I believe that we have Mr. Leo Gerard on the line. And I can have Mr. McGowan confirm that.
And if, if I may, this is one of the questions I had as well, because I looked at the rates at the Capital Region Wastewater. And the, the dumping, dumping fees there versus the ones in Entwistle. And there's a significant difference. Significantly higher at the Capital Region. So my question was the same thing. Are those costs? Do we have full cost recovery? Factoring in not just the operating maintenance costs, but the obsolescence of, of the equipment and also the life cycle. For the, the cells themselves. Thank you.
This is Mr. McGowan, the General Manager of Infrastructure. I do believe we have Leo on the line. And hopefully he can respond to that. Yes, then there certainly is a difference between the two. Areas because they are, they dispose of that waste in different manners. And of course, we have. Bills and we are charged by the Alberta Capital Region Wastewater Commission. For that discharge and it also requires additional infrastructure. For testing and monitoring of the, the waste disposal. So there's additional costs associated with that. Relative to Entwistle. I see Mr. Gerard is on the line and, and maybe he can expand a little bit in terms of the cost recovery and some of the challenges. That we face in both the, the Alberta Capital Region Wastewater Commission transmission. And then that service being provided in Entwistle. So, Mr. Gerard.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Thank you, Ms. Swain. Good morning, councilors and good morning, Mayor. Yes, so to the mayor and through the mayor and to Counselor Melnick and adding to Mr. McGowan's comments. The, yes, we believe we're capturing as best we can full cost recovery at our wastewater transfer stations. That being said, it's been a little while since we did a really in-depth review. Opportunity arises for us to, we've got a consultant on board that's reviewing our water and wastewater rates as we speak. So it'd be an add-on to that. But rest assured, we believe that we're capturing the full cost recovery on that. As Mr. McGowan indicated. There's different nuances when we're comparing our service to that of other services as well. So. Say, for example, our wastewater transfer stations on the east half of the county, that goes through the commission. And to a degree, we're vulnerable and the rates are to a degree out of our control. The wastewater transfer station out in Entwistle, that we have a little more control over that one. That, that. Liquid waste gets the underground transported to the lagoons. So, short answer. Yes, it's an opportunity for us to look at those rates, but as it's, as we speak now, we believe we're recovering full cost.
Thank you. Second question I have and the final question I have, it's, it's a comment and question basically in many senses. So what is the overall impact revenue wise that we anticipate that these changes of fees and charges are bringing? To the, the fold of Parkland County? And I'm talking to Mr. Dyke, I guess. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to you and through you, to Counselor Melnick. We don't believe that there's any significant budgetary impacts for the additional fees and charges that we have here. Of course. There are some new fees and charges and some extended durations with the. And Whistlepool that we haven't been able to see due to the COVID pandemic, but. Those fees should offset the expenses associated with running the facility to the extent possible in, in that type of facility. So. We will, as we develop the budget over the course of the summer, identify exactly. To what extent these fees and charges changes will impact the budget, but at this point, it will be negligible, the, the impact that we have for the changes in the fees and charges.
Yeah, so it's, it's negligible for the Parkland County, but it does have an impact on the resident. And just kind of wanting to make that point is, again, back to our shareholders. They are our shareholders and sometimes are the continual increase of fees needed just because that's what the region is doing. Whereas, you know, when we're looking to say, how do we, how do we make an impact on individuals' lives? That may be an area that we want to take a look at as Parkland County and say, do we need to continue always just saying, well, it's time to up the fees? So, thanks.
Counselor Kabasiak, you had your hand raised earlier. Do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have a question and I was just trying to think through in the process here. I'm just thinking about fees and charges and how they're tied to fines, in particular fines on environmental reserves and removal of trees. If Mr. Cross or Ms. Swain just wanted to respond to that, please? These are separate issues, the, the fines when we look at people taking down trees on environmental reserves.
Mr. Mayor, to you through Counselor Kabasiak.
Um, Mr. Mayor, to you through Counselor Kobasiak, uh that's not captured in fees and charges. That's captured under the Parks Bylaw and that's where the fines are established and enforced from.
Okay, thank you. I was I was wondering what the tie in there and I was thinking about that. Thank you. That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Councilor McNabb.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I was just scrolling through the fees and charges for the second or possibly third time. I I just noted um the Parks and Recreation Area, the Jackfish Lake Parking fee per vehicle. And I'm sort of thinking about um our new boat launch that is being prospective um thought of in Wobnum area. And then, and I got a few phone calls in regards to the boat launch right in Wobnum. Um why wouldn't that be captured under this um uh fees and charges? Moving forward with the boat launch perspective and parking, I guess, um at the at the those particular boat launches. When we're capturing it under Jackfish Lake here. Maybe Mr. Cross can help me understand that.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe Ms. Mate uh will be able to respond to uh this question for you, Councilor McNabb.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Uh Mr. Mayor, through you to Counselor McNabb. Um so historically, the residents of the village of Wobman received a free parking pass. Um and so for this year, it was decided that we would continue on, you know, with the services that those folks were used to while we. Um, you know, get our feet underneath us as we as we incorporate the former village into, you know, our new hamlet within Parkland County. And so we're certainly looking at, you know, how that works um and whether or not any changes need to be made. And the hope is to move towards um, you know, as we kind of said, with the the cemeteries and harmonized rate across all of our facilities. Um we we do want to take some time and explain that to the residents who have been getting that parking pass and. Um, you know, work through some of the other changes uh and we'll look to add that um change in the fall. With um with the utility rates as well.
Uh thank you, Ms. Mate. And if I may, just um, I I have heard from some residents on the other side saying, you know. If the village of Wobman getting free parking, how come I'm not? So um there's two sides to that.
Looking to members of council for additional comments or questions, Councilor Melnick.
Thank you. Um I think also too, while I'm not going to ask for it today, I think it is an opportunity for us also to be looking. Um in the future of adding an an additional item within um our fees and charges or somewhere within our bylaws. About individuals that have received stop orders and continue to work. I know that uh if you have a, you know, start a project, your fee permit fee is doubled. But I think that is sometimes that is just a matter of not realizing or not getting through the process. But if people have stop orders issued. And they are very much aware of the fact that they're out of line and continue to do. So I think that is an I uh an item that uh Parkline County Council. Um today or in the future needs to have a discussion as to what that would look like and how uh we can manage that. With the assistance of staff possibly looking at what other jurisdictions may do.
Any further comments from members of council? Yeah, I'll take an opportunity to ask a few questions and and some of the questions um pertain to whether we're um. Our costs are are high enough or whether we're um really fulfilling our cost recovery principle. Um so the first one is uh the oil charges to the oil and gas pipeline companies for pipeline crossings. Um of road, county road allowances. Um so we have an inspection fee for each road allowance crossed at two hundred and fifty dollars. So one question I have is that, does that include an onsite um investigation and inspection? Um because I'm thinking if there are staff are traveling from uh. Uh, you know, the office are going to the west or southwest part of Parkland County. There's an hour and a half to two hours of travel time alone, plus vehicle expense, plus the time to review the documents um itself. Um some, I guess, first question, do we do site uh site inspections? And if so, um is is that fee of two hundred and fifty dollars adequate?
And uh to the chair, I believe that's a land management question, and we do have Ms. Lauren Abig on the line to uh. Answer any land management question. She may need to take this one away. Uh and get an answer from Donna Whitewich, who's our municipal land coordinator, but I will pass it to Ms. Abig if she does have an answer on that. And we also have Jody Hancock on the line too, who may also be able to answer. I don't want to put Jody on the spot again for the second time today, but.
Uh Ms. Swain, that is uh in engineering. It is in Schedule C, so I can take that question. So uh we do have oil and gas facility approvals uh at two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh that includes primarily a desktop review. If we do do a field inspection, it's generally a drive-by when we're already out in the field with another crew member. So it's not a a person specifically going out to one location, turning around and coming back. We we double that up with uh the number of people we have in the field to do that reconnaissance when needed. Uh what you'll see in the in the change uh for twenty twenty-two going forward is that we've scratched out approach. So that they do fall into the approach fees if they need to build a new approach, whether it's temporary or permanent. Um so we have changed that a little bit and and we are seeing some additional costs uh coming in for those oil and gas. So if it's an existing access, they're just using what's already there. Mostly, it's a field approach. Um it's a desktop review at two fifty and maybe a drive-by uh inspection uh before and after. Uh but we have uh removed the word approach and we are uh increasing to the standard four hundred and nine dollars per inspection, if that answers the question.
Thanks. Um so I appreciate the fact that we may or may not be doing a site visit, but if we do one or two. Um I would say that is probably too low. Um another question I have. Uh one second, let me just scroll down here and it's uh planning and development. So on page nine of the attachment. Uh says Municipal Development Plan Amendments, MDP, text, map amendments. Uh roughly fifty-two hundred dollars, area structure plans, hamlet, area redevelopment plans and amendments. Um so we have major um amendments, which is the same fifty-two hundred. Um then we have minor amendments, which are roughly thirty-one hundred dollars. So what are we using to differentiate between major and minor? Do we have a definition um for that? And then the second question I have uh with planning and development, which ties into this, on page twenty-one of the document. Uh under miscellaneous fees, it identifies uh MDP and ASP amendments, ASPs and. And harps uh and amendments, conceptual schemes um to be applied on the anniversary date of the application of. A thousand and and fifty-seven. So just some clarity on what that um fee is for as well. Um I might as well throw one, a third one out. Um just under on page twenty-two, it talks about miscellaneous fees for project management. It's a hundred and thirty-two dollars per hour. Um Council's been informed uh that. Um planning and development has had to defer some work because um there's a, the workload is just so onerous right now. That uh there's been a number of projects deferred. So if if we're deferring projects, um why are we providing? Um the this project management service. I'll wait for an answer on those, please.
Yeah, I'm just turning my video on here so that um can see me. Thank you for your questions uh through you and to you, Mr. Mayor. So starting with the first question on the. Uh schedule. So you're asking whether there's a difference or what the difference is between a major and a minor in terms of a ASP amendment. Or a HARP amendment and whatnot. Uh I believe, I don't have a a definition in front of me, but I believe we would look at that. As minor might be just a text amendment versus a major if you're completely changing uh the mapping. Or a land use or something of that nature. So I I think we use our discretion there. But I will have to get back to you on whether there's an actual firm definition on that. Um I apologize, I I couldn't quite get to the second item. You said there's a thousand fifty-seven dollar fee for.
And that's under miscellaneous fees, uh page twenty-one. Um and it's for amendments to those statutory plans. So I just want some clarification, what those fees, um because obviously, I'm assuming they're different than um. Those other fees that were identified for amendments for for those plans.
I'll have to look into that one again. I I think there are some statutory plans that or non-statutory plans that aren't listed here. So you've got your standard area structure plan, conceptual schemes, but there are times where there's a statutory plan or non-statutory. That's outside of that, and I believe that fee is meant to capture that. Um it would be very rare that we would use that fee. But it's it's probably there or exists because of one or two scenarios or cases where it did come up. I can look into that one a little bit further. Uh and then, uh sorry, your third question was around the project management fee. So in the time I.
Yeah, and why we're providing that service.
So I would suggest in the time that I've been here, we've we've never used that fee. Uh again, it probably was something that was there and existed uh at some point when. You know, if you have an applicant that doesn't necessarily uh hire a planning consultant or or have that professional service. We would have provided that service for them. But I will tell you that in the last several years, we've not used that fee. Uh most applicants do come in with their own planning consultant where we don't need to do that. And uh you you are correct in terms of the, you know, when we do get an application in. Uh it's much better for that to have a planning consultant, um just given our workloads and whatnot. So. Yes, that again, that's that's there as a, a just in case. We we have a lot of fees that are. Uh based on, you know, one-off or occasional things that happen. But when those things come up and we don't have a fee, we're in we're in a worse position there. So I hope that answers your question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh the final question I have, it's on page thirty-nine. And uh it's under non-emergent boat recovery for two hundred and thirty-five dollars. So I'm assuming this is for water rescues or water service calls, which includes. Like uh taking gasoline up to those water enthusiasts that ran out of fuel. So I'm wondering how many, uh I guess, how often does this occur? Um how many fire personnel would respond? I'm assuming at least two. And again, just go going back to the cost, we've got, you know, two, three, I don't know how many staff members uh from fire services would be involved. We've got the um expense of commuting to the site, getting the boat, hauling it down. Um so we've got vehicle and watercraft expense um and two hundred and thirty-five dollars again. I'm just curious whether staff believes that's adequate for cost, full cost recovery. Thanks. Mr. Mayor, I believe we have Chief Cornforth there can respond. Go ahead, Chief.
Hi, good morning. Uh, Mayor Shagis, to your question uh in regards to the boat recoveries and uh boat non-emergent rescues. We do about five a year. They range from mechanical problems to uh people that have capsized in a storm uh event. That didn't get off the lake in time and also uh running out of fuel. The actual costs range in around uh for, let's say, an average call out. We call out the entire crew because we don't know how many boat operators we have. So it's in around the range of about three hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars. And we charge that rate uh based on uh, you know, the cost of recovering uh what we need to for our own fuel cost. And uh we actually leave the boat in the water at the marina, so we now pay a rental slip fee for that as well. Um certainly could be higher, but it's a it's a matter of a collection issue. Often, people give us addresses that um. May or may not go through for the billing side. So it's, yeah, we could up the cost, but it it may not be recovered uh a hundred percent. Thank you. Hopefully that answered your question.
Yes, thank you. So we're not, we're not um fulfilling our principle of full cost recovery on this. Um have we considered impounding the those watercraft and holding it um to ensure that we get or. Whatever that fee is. I mean, if you if you, and this happens all the time, people park in an area where it says no parking. Handicap parking, guess what? Your vehicle's towed. It's impounded. You pay the fine and you pay the the impound fee as well.
Uh to to Mayor Shagis, to your question, uh we haven't looked at the impounding and uh where we might impound boats or if we have the legislation to do that. So we can look at that and uh, you know, some of the boats we wouldn't want to impound. We might want to uh take them out to the landfill. Some of them aren't well-maintained, so um but we certainly look at that. Uh thank you.
Thanks very much. Uh any final questions or comments from members of council on this? I am not seeing any. Um so we do have uh the motion put forward by Counselor Kabasiak. Ask members of council, please raise your hand if you're in favor of that motion. And that is carried unanimously. Can I get a mover for the next motion, please?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I move that uh by law, twenty twenty-one dash twenty receives second reading.
Comments or questions, sec- on second reading? Not seeing any. Please raise your hand if you're in favor of that motion that is carried unanimously. Can I get a mover for the third motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, it's Counselor John McPann, Division Five. That by law, twenty twenty-one dash twenty be presented at this meeting for third reading.
Thank you, those in favor. Raise your hand. That is carried. Mover for the fourth motion.
Counselor Melnick, Division Six, I'll put forward the motion that by law, twenty twenty-one dash twenty receive third and final reading.
And final opportunity for comments on this bylaw. Seeing none, uh those in favor, please raise your hand. That is carried unanimously. Thank you. And can I get a mover for the fifth and final motion attached with the site?
Uh Mr. Mayor, it's on Lisa Jensen, Counselor Division One, and I'll make the motion that council approve authorization of electronic signature for bylaw. Twenty twenty-one dash twenty in accordance with section two thirteen of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you, those in favor. Please raise your hand. That is carried. Last item on today's agenda is committed reports under eight point three, and I'll start with Councilor McNabb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I'd bring forward is um ten of Meridian Housing, and um we went through our public interviews. Uh for public members, we got to approve those members at our next meeting and it'll be coming towards for um. Coming towards our council with those names, um proposed names to um our council in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Um along with Counselor McNabb, we both attended the uh Parkline County Library Board. Where we approved the plan of service for the library for twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five to twenty twenty-five, I mean. Um so uh as you heard in the last um uh committee meeting where they gave their presentation. They've, the library's been doing some really great work through the pandemic and trying to reach outside of the four walls. And they uh will continue to try to do that. Um all of council, as was said earlier, attended the tri-regional workshop. Um a few members of the council attended in part or in whole economic diversification meeting. Where we had updates on the industrial area structure plan and the clean energy improvement program uh where they gave input. The uh main one that I would like to speak about is the Evergreen Foundation. So just again, wanted to uh reiterate once, one another time that the foundation continues to work towards the senior lodges. In the Wildwood and Victor Lake area. The Victor Lake area um lodge is estimated to be an approximate. Six to seven million dollar project with um already over two and a half million dollars committed from the province for that project. Um they are, it will be a indigenous housing and uh it will be a. Um a facility that will um be quite unlike any other facility, probably up to about ten rooms possibly. Um the Wildwood um lodge project is a seventeen million dollar project approximately. In both the Wildwood and the Victor Lake, they're using the design-build um uh method. Um the Hinton project is just about completed. They are looking to have a expected move-in date for August fifteenth. For the first phase and the final move-in date be in April. The final move-in date typically is for those that. The building was expanding, so they want to get everybody that's current residents well-assimilated. Um making sure they've got any other bugs um removed before they add additional residents in there. Um I did articulate to Evergreen Foundation that um Parkland County would like a presentation. So hopefully, they will be um. Contacting our staff to set that up before the break. contacting our staff to set that up before the break, articulating that our council would like the respect of a presentation to ensure that the council has a complete understanding of the projects there. So with that, thank you very much.
Councillor Jensen?
Nothing for me to report. Thank you.
Councillor Kabasiak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to report that June 16th, along with the rest of council, I attended the tri-municipal workshop and good discussion. It was good to share information with our, our other colleagues in other jurisdictions in Parkland County, in Spur Mountains, 20 planes. I did enjoy that. Just had an update from the Alice Committee and Alice, I did briefly report last time that there's a lot more support, corporate support that's coming for the, for the Alice project called Raising Forward. So we see A&amp;W Canada being involved. We see cargo being involved, the collaboration to support Alice. And Alice, since 2015, Alice has grown. They're from 11 communities. There are now 31 municipalities that are involved. They had about 220 farmers and now there's over 1,100 farmers and ranchers that are involved. And Alberta has some 17,000 acres that are part of conservation and sustainability parts of the Alice program. So there is a, an awareness, there is participation, and there's also corporate sponsorship, which is good in making that program independent. Also attended the Villanueva Landing Network and that group went, was going over the governance model and the steps forward. And there will be a council discussion on this economic development and Robert Fernandez will be coming to council to see where we want to continue participating. One of the aspects of Villanueva is the aerospace and our NLA Shane Getz and did mention that 90% of aerospace is on the ground. So interesting perspective there. With that, Mr. Chair, those are the three reports I'd like to present.
Thank you. Councillor Hollins?
Yeah, just one thing to report to council and I was going to say administration. The Alberta Capital Region Wastewater Commission has announced that they have acquired a new GM and it's Catherine Polkowski. And she, she's currently the Director of Utilities with the city of St. Albert. So she'll be coming onboard on July 15th, but her position will be effective August 1st. So there's a two-week handover period there. So Mike is retiring and we'll have a new person. That's all.
Thank you, councillor Hollins. I have no committee reports today. So if I can get a mover for the motion, please.
That's probably me.
I, yeah, I was looking at who made the last motion and I believe Mr. Chair, councillor Kabasiak, Division Three, I'll move the committee reports to be received as information.
Those in favor, please raise your hand. Those that want to argue whoever, who wants to make the next motion, we'll get you to wrestle.
Well, it's frozen as my screen is most of the time. I didn't know who.
So that, that does bring us to the conclusion of the agenda today. I want to thank administration. There was a lot of information and very detailed packages put forward for council. So thank you. With that, we'll adjourn at 12:44.